We will start by calling Josh Carmichael. All right, will you please state your name for the record?
My name is Josh Carmichael.
And? Do we want to check the echo? Can you state where in the basin storage area you live?
According to the map that I've seen, I am right on the southern edge of index cell thirty-two.
Do you want to just state your address?
One, three, five, zero, eight, West one hundred and First Street North.
And is that in the Bentley area?
That is in the Bentley area.
And how long have you lived in that area?
As of February seventeenth of this year, I will have lived within five hundred feet of that area of the Equus beds for thirty-eight years.
Referring to interveners exhibit number, what's been marked for identification as one for the tab number one, I guess, do you see a map with your name on it?
I do.
And does the triangle with your name roughly reflect the area of your domestic well?
It does.
Why do you have a domestic well?
It is my only source of water in that area.
And do you have a secondary or alternative source?
I have none at this time.
And to your knowledge, is your well within six hundred and sixty feet of any city of Wichita well?
It is not.
How would you and your family be impacted if your domestic well is no longer able to access quality water?
It would be life altering.
Would you care to expand on that?
A pretty, pretty broad question. So if we run out of water, obviously either we have to get water hauled in, we have to have a rule water, or we have to up and leave.
Have you heard any discussion throughout these hearings or elsewhere of a potential remedy that the city of Wichita would provide to those domestic wells impacted by the ASR project?
I have not, and that was one of the initial things that I found alarming. In the Equus beds well field, there is gobs and gobs and gobs of domestic wells that would not be protected but are in the basin storage area. They're just simply not within six hundred and sixty feet of a city of Wichita well.
And if the city offers to remedy those impacted regardless of the distance, does that give you the assurance you need regarding the sustainability of your well?
I'm not sure that guarantee me that I will always have water would make me feel that my well would always be sustainable. If it was ever become impacted by chlorides or go dry, even if I do have another source of water, my well would not be sustainable.
Are you at all concerned about the length of time it would take during a drought to remedy any issues you experience with your domestic well?
Of course I am. Nothing happens overnight, and I get that, but when it comes to water, it has to happen overnight. It's in my opinion that water is the lifeblood of all of us without its, for a few hours becomes a big deal.
Can you tell us what your occupation is?
I currently run a center pivot irrigation business.
And how long have you been doing that?
I think I started in twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve, somewhere in that timeframe.
Was there anything specific that drew you into the irrigation business?
I seen what can actually be done with a drop of water and how we could become more efficient with it and the technologies that were coming down the pipeline to help us be more efficient with it. And it swooped me in.
What type of work do you do for your customers?
We, we do not drill wells, but we do work on the pumps, the column, the motors up top, the center pivots, and the technology that goes throughout the whole system.
What are some of the things that you've implemented to help your customers conserve water?
Oh, there's many facets that we have done. In my opinion, the biggest one is sprinkler efficiencies. We went from high pressure systems down to low pressure systems. We've increased our efficiency out of those sprinklers dramatically. I'm trying to make every drop count. And on top of that, we have added technologies, whether it is a variable rate irrigation, soil moisture probes, or monitoring water meters to know how much water we're pumping, when we're pumping it, and a totalizer for us.
Who pays for all of these technology efforts?
My customers would be the ones that would pay for all of these.
And what would motivate them to spend money on conservation?
Well, contrary to the popular belief, it costs a lot of money to irrigate. You have your pumping costs and you have your maintenance cost. And also if you're, if you're overwatering, you're losing yield. So there, there's a huge cost that seems to always go duly unnoted.
You mentioned that you don't personally dig wells, but do you have quite a bit of experience working with wells in general?
I do.
Would you say, have you experienced differences between wells throughout the basin storage area?
That would be correct.
Can you elaborate on any of those differences?
I would say the, of course, the closer you get to the river, you get into the salts. The closer you get to Halsted, you get into iron bacteria. The closer you get to Burton, you get into salt and manganese. That would be the differences that I see between the wells. Every well is different. Every well that's in the same field is different. Depths. So yeah, there's, there's a lot of differences.
Do you happen to know the approximate cost is of putting in a well?
The last I knew was upwards of one hundred dollars a foot just to drill the well. That does not include any of your pumping equipment.
And do you know approximately how long it takes to drill a well?
Somewhat of a loaded question. The timeframe of when the rig actually gets to the field and has completed the hole, cased it, and ready to go, I would say two to three days. The issue that we have right now is the backlog of wells that need drilled. Most drilling companies in our area are three to four months out right now.
So we're three to four months out during a normal period. Would you estimate that that would increase during a period of a drought?
Of course, it will increase drastically during a drought as we've seen in twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve.
With irrigation systems, understanding that there are different types of systems, can you tell us anything about the cost of putting in an irrigation system?
To start a complete new project, you'd probably be looking at upwards of around eighty to a hundred thousand dollars based on how the system is set up, no well included, and no piping or electricity included.
And if that system loses access to water, does it retain that value?
Somewhat. The depreciation schedule on it is quite drastic the first couple of years. So it wouldn't be anything like buying it to set it there for twenty years.
Have you observed in any of the systems you've worked on an impact to the system from chloride?
Yeah, most definitely. We've, we've had to make the switch to a different kind of piping. So we can try to get more years out of the systems. Most of the ones that you see are galvanized pipe, but we're going with line pipe. Or we are putting PVC pipe underneath the galvanized pipe strictly due to the chloride issue.
To your knowledge, if an irrigator invests in conservation efforts, what happens to the reduction, the water not used?
To my knowledge, it's on a year-by-year base. It's kind of a use it or lose it annual accounting method.
You mentioned that you were just getting started in the two thousand eleven-ish period during that drought period of two thousand eleven and twelve, did you notice any impact to your, to irrigation system?
Um, yeah, there was quite a few in the area that put excessive hours on trying to keep their crops alive. A lot of those even let half of the pivot go, or maybe even all of the pivot, and just try to keep up with what they could and use the water as efficiently as they could. Kind of like Rich said yesterday, if it was a corn rotation, a lot of that got chopped for silage for cattle. Really, really eye-opening experience to see somebody trying to save that type of an investment.
When you say trying to save that type of investment, can you elaborate on what you mean by that?
They were willing to give up half of their initial investment to try to make a crop out of the other half of it.
So for you personally, having a domestic well but not your own crops, are you making investments in your property and land based on having access to water?
Can you ask that question another way?
Have you made investments in your home based on having access to water that you would not have made if you did not have access to water?
Yeah, we have indoor plumbing. We, when I bought that house in two thousand and six, maybe earlier, the house was built in the seventies, we went all through it, put in updated appliances, fixtures, toilets. That was not something that we got any money for or a pat on the back that says we did good. We did it because we thought it was right.
And do you know the value of your house if you no longer have water?
I'm not sure that I would know the value of it, but I'd say that it'd be very, very minimal.
Are you familiar with the Wichita's ASR project in general?
I am.
And what is your knowledge of the basin storage area?
My knowledge of the basin storage area is a little bit limited due to the fact that I'm not sure exactly where it's at.
Where it's at in the aquifer or where it's at in general?
Where it is at in the aquifer.
And what is your understanding of the function of the basin storage area?
My understanding is that the basin storage area is supposed to be an unsaturated thickness. Whether that's from the ground down or maybe possibly even above the ground, I'm not sure. But that's my opinion on what it is.
And if you understand lowering, but the minimum index level is the bottom of the basin storage area, do you have concerns with lowering that minimum index level?
Most definitely I have concerns with that. Back in nineteen ninety-three, when GMD two and the city came together, and I, I do believe DWR was involved in this process as well, they established this level for a reason. I don't, I don't really have any of the facts about why it was established in front of me, but from what I recall, that was one of the lowest rates that the aquifer reached due to pumping. In nineteen ninety-three, the city agreed to this. I think they might even built some management plans off of it. That's one of the alarming concerns for me is if it was so detrimental in nineteen ninety-three, what has changed to make it okay today?
And in reviewing the proposal and in handing these hearings, have you heard anything that alleviates that concern?
I have not.
Would you like additional information to show that going below the ninety-three levels is sustainable for the aquifer?
Most definitely. I tried, I'm basing my opinions off of past work that was done by the city. And Burns and Mack, they told us that ASR two was going to put so many acre feet back in the ground. I think they might have achieved twenty-five percent of that. So they were seventy-five percent wrong. If this model is seventy-five percent wrong, I think it's extremely harmful for the aquifer.
In the city's proposal, when they discuss the lowered minimum index levels, they also show the remaining saturated thickness in the area. What comfort level does knowing the remaining saturated thickness give you regarding this proposal?
I haven't seen what their saturated thickness would be in my index cell, but I can't say that I would be comfortable with it, even if I had the figure in front of me.
Yesterday, Mr. Basor talked about having available water yet being contaminated by chloride due to his proximity to the Arcansas River. Is that a concern you similarly face?
Most definitely. I think Mr. Basor had stated, and you had shown him on a map that the salt plume from the big river was moving to the north and to the east. And index level thirty-two would be north and east of Mr. Basor's location.
That was in District Exhibit Number sixty-eight, I believe. Towards the back, figure number eight. Mr. Romero's expert report. It should be the last figure in his.
Figure eight.
Do you believe that's the image we spoke, I spoke about with Mr. Basor yesterday?
Yes.
And in looking at those lines and finding index well thirty-two, that's really close to you in index cell thirty-two, what do you notice about the color of lines?
The colors of the lines seem to be right on top of me.
And then does that increase your concern regarding chloride movement?
Most definitely.
Do you, or have you looked at what chloride might do to your domestic well?
I haven't looked at the exact things, I guess, that it could do to my household through my work in irrigation. I guess it's kind of common knowledge for me to what it could do. Rusty pipes, rusty valves. It'd be really hard to get, this is without water spots. And an adverse effect on your health. Yeah.
The city's proposal also includes a component of the Aquifer Maintenance Credits. Do you have an understanding of how the AMC's would operate?
Not necessarily. I know we have black water and we got blue water. And then it, I'm not sure where it goes from there. That's the part that's a little frustrating to me to see how this water gets mixed together and then we have a new color.
Do you understand whether the city would be injecting water into the aquifer to accumulate these credits?
I do.
What is your understanding?
My understanding is that they're going to be pulling water from the river, sending it to town, and getting a future credit in the well field for that gallon that they sent to town.
Do you know if any other users of the aquifer are similarly able to accumulate such credits?
It's my understanding that all water right holders in the state of Kansas follow the same guidelines where it's a use it or lose it on an annual basis.
And does the AMC concept appear consistent with that?
It does not. It would, it would allow for banking of future credits that we're not sure that are even in the aquifer.
From the proposal and the here and the testimony you've heard this far, have you, do you understand what might potentially happen to you or the health of the aquifer if the one hundred and twenty thousand acre feet were withdrawn from the aquifer?
There's been evidence that's been supplied that's supposed to assure me that the water will be there. Unfortunately, I go back to the ASR two program where they're going to inject all this water. They have achieved twenty-five percent of that. So I'm not sure that I can rely on this model.
Yesterday, Mr. Basor talked about a lack of trust. Would you agree with those sentiments?
I would. And my previous thoughts here, in nineteen ninety-three, we set these levels. The city agreed to it. DWR agreed to it. City set management programs based off of it, showed they're in favor of it. Now they're not. Is that going to happen again in five years? This gets approved, are they going to come back for another hundred and twenty thousand acre feet? I'm not sure.
Why did you decide to intervene in this matter?
I decided to intervene because I felt there's a lot of unanswered questions and after, after listening to all the testimony, I feel that I have more unanswered questions now. I don't feel that the city has showed their, or bear their burden of proof to tell us that this really is going to work. I'm worried about the storing of the AMC's. Are, are they storing that under my personal property? Is that going to affect me if I were to dig a pool in my backyard and there's water at one foot? Do I get compensated for water being stored under my land like they do with natural gases and stuff like that? Being around the well field quite a bit and the river, I have noticed sinkholes that appear due to underflow. And I feel that when we are recharging this at a rate that they're trying to do, they're going to be creating underflow to try to fill a kind of depression. Another adverse effect that has not, nobody's came up with any solutions for. I'm not, I'm not sure that I will be covered at my domestic well since I'm not within six hundred and sixty feet of one of their wells. I'm alarmed that they're trying to switch to all Equus beds water to create a hole so they can recharge and not use genie. To me, that's not being a good steward of the water. Those are some of the key points of why I chose to intervene.
As someone outside of six hundred and sixty feet, or even for those within the six hundred and sixty feet, what type of program would you like to see in place for those, for anyone in Equus beds impacted by ASR pumping?
With, with a project of this magnitude and the the square area that they're wanting to call a basin storage area, I feel that everybody that's in that basin storage area should fall under the six the square area that they're wanting to call a basin storage area, I feel that everybody that's in that basin storage area should fall under the six hundred and sixty-foot clause. Whether it be due to a high water table or to the chloride migration or lack of water.
And should the burden of proof be on the individual to prove that they've been negatively impacted?
No. It should not. It's in my opinion that that is why we have the Division of Water Resources there to work for the people.
Do you fear there could be a lengthy period of trying to prove damage and then also implementing a remedy if something were to happen?
Most definitely. How long has this hearing been going on?
Do you think it would be worthwhile to model and study the maximum possible withdrawal the city is seeking from the equis beds?
Absolutely, by three different companies.
I know you've mentioned that you have several concerns regarding this. Are there any concerns out that you've not yet mentioned regarding the proposal that you've got here?
I am a little bit worried about the, if there's any permit conditions stating that the native rights are used before the ASR credits are used. I tried to look that up last night and I can't really find anything where there was any permit conditions that were going to be tied to this. It's in my opinion that a project like this should have quite a few permit conditions.
And do you have a reason for why you think those native rights should be used first?
I, I guess I would base that back on a native water right. You have so many acre feet per year to use at your discretion on an annual basis. I, the ASRs are going to go into a accounting system of some sort where they can bank those up for all at one time. I just feel that it's, we don't have access to the bank accounting method, so we have to use our water right. I feel that the city should be held at the same standards.
Do you believe your customers would want to bank their water rights if they had the opportunity?
Absolutely, one hundred percent. No question about it.
Well, thank you. I have no further questions.
Thank you. Mr. Carmichael, you indicated that, that you don't dig wells. Do you have any licenses as a well driller?
I did not.
You indicated in your main testimony that if your well were impacted by chlorides, it would not be sustainable. Are you familiar with reverse osmosis treatment systems that treat water for salinity?
Very vaguely.
Have, have you looked at the possibility of installing such a system in a domestic well?
I have not.
Do you have any reason to think that you wouldn't be able to install a reverse osmosis system in your domestic well if it developed a chloride problem?
I'm not sure what is required of the system, any infrastructure that is needed. So I, I really can't answer that question.
So i- isn't it really true, Mr. Carmichael, that you actually don't know if your domestic well would be sustainable in the event of chloride impacts because you haven't looked at whether reverse osmosis system would solve that issue?
I guess that would be correct. Yeah.
Mr. Carmichael, did you read the city's proposal that was submitted at the start of this whole matter?
Bits and pieces and attended the hearings.
And you've mentioned that, that in connection with ASR two, there was a forward-looking projection and the city has only achieved twenty percent of the recharge that it initially thought it would be able to achieve with the ASR two project. Do you know why that is?
I'm not sure.
Do you know what the state of the aquifer is today, Mr. Carmichael, in terms of, of how it compares to pre-development levels? And whether there's actually any space in the aquifer currently that the city could put recharge in?
I'm not for sure of the state of the aquifer at the city's injection wells, but I am familiar with the aquifer near my domestic property.
Okay, and you haven't examined or investigated at all why the recharge goal initially projected has been seventy-five percent underachieved, have you?
I have tried, but I've came up with no answer.
So you haven't seen any information indicating that it's, it's tied to the aquifer simply being too full for that level of recharge that was originally projected because the city has cut back the use of its native rights since nineteen ninety-three?
Can you state that question a different way?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure how much of the testimony you've seen in this case or how often you were in attendance. I'm, I'm asking, did you not see any of the testimony or exhibits that showed that the problem with the recharge and the reason for the underachievement is the city cutting back the use of its rights from and after nineteen ninety-three so that there's not space left in the aquifer to recharge?
I attended the, the hearings where I think that the city talked about that.
And did, did you understand the information as it was presented?
I would say for the most part I did.
And, and what, for what reason do you continue to think that, that that's not the explanation for the city having underachieved the original recharge projections?
I would say that my question would be, where did we get the projections at? We're, we're basing this decision off of a model. Is it the, is it the same projection that ASR two came up of?
So if the projection, Mr. Carmichael, didn't account for the cutback that the city made after nineteen ninety-three, wouldn't you expect the projection to not be right when you got a decade or so out?
I would expect it not to be right. That's correct.
But, but really, as I understand your testimony today, you're, you're basically assuming an attitude that since the city's projection for ASR two was incorrect, you're not really willing to look at any of the information that the city provides. Or if you look at it, you refuse to believe it because the city's projection for ASR two turned out not to be right. Is that what you're saying?
I would not agree with that statement at all. I'm more than willing to look at any information provided to me to change my opinion on it.
Well, I think you indicated during direct, Mr. Carmichael, and, and you can correct this if I misunderstood, but I thought you said that you hadn't looked at the Burns and McDonnell information on the saturated thickness projected for your index cell after pumping down to the nineteen ninety-three levels, and that if you looked at it, you wouldn't be comfortable with it.
That statement is based off of my opinion on the projections.
And so what it does basically come down to is you haven't looked, and if you did look, you wouldn't believe it because the city was wrong in a prior projection.
Do you know if that information is available to me today?
That was part of, of, part of the reason for my question whether you had read the proposal because that information was all in the exhibits to the proposal. It's been on the DWR website in the publicly available posted exhibits for the proposal for probably over a year now. And there is a graphic by which Burns and McDonnell displayed the saturated thickness by index cell. So it's fairly easy to find if you go through the exhibits and look for that. And it actually has been made an exhibit of record in the case as well. Also, Mr. Carmichael, in terms of looking at-
I, I just had a quick question. What, what figure are we talking about in the proposal that we're referencing? We're trying to look for that one.
Yeah, I'm not sure sitting here today without breaking out of the session to go online and look at the electronic version of the proposal. But I do know that it was one of the exhibits and included the graphic that depicted saturated thickness as well.
Okay, I'll with, I'll withdraw the question if, if we can move on then. If, if Mr. McLeod doesn't know which exhibit he's referring to, then I'm guessing the witness doesn't know either. So, thank you.
Okay, Mr. McLeod, please proceed.
Yes, I remember it being the subject of, of quite a lot of questioning of witnesses presented early in the hearings. So the information is out there. But let me turn also to the subject of chlorides. Mr. Carmichael, have you looked at any of the studies on chloride movement?
I have.
Have you looked specifically at the study on chloride movement from twenty fourteen from which the map that Ms. Wendling was using had been drawn?
I have a limited knowledge of the, the wording of it.
What, what's your understanding of what the twenty fourteen study looked at and what its conclusions were?
I think, I think this map that I'm looking at here is showing how the chlorides have moved over a period of time or into a future period of time.
Do you see on the map exhibit references to different scenarios such as double pumping and different colors of lines that represent those scenarios?
Can you repeat that question? I only got a little bit of it.
When, when you look down at the, at the key or legend of the map that shows what the different colored lines mean, do you see references to different scenarios such as a double pumping scenario? And an explanation of which colors of lines are illustrating each scenario?
I do.
And do you recall what the chloride movement projections were for each of the modeled scenarios in terms of how fast the chloride movement might be accelerated at different levels in each of the model scenarios?
Can you help me confirm is this, is this map part of the model?
If we're looking at the same map, Mr. Carmichael, I believe the exhibit was drawn out of the USGS document that illustrated the study results.
Okay, can you repeat your question too, please? Sorry.
Can we just have the reporter read back the question?
Question, and do you recall what the chloride movement projections were for each of the modeled scenarios in terms of how fast the chloride movement might be accelerated at different levels in each of the model scenarios?
I would say, yes, I recall that. I do believe that's what this figure eight is about.
So, were there any of the modeled scenarios in particular that, that gave you concerns for your property in terms of how much faster the chlorides might move in the event that that modeled scenario were implemented?
Yeah, that would be either, is it, is the top one purple or black? Be number, number one and number three.
And do you recall what the acceleration of the chloride movement was in each of those scenarios?
Looks rather small, but still an acceleration.
And again, in your direct testimony, Mr. Carmichael, you indicated that some information had been presented in the hearings to give you assurances of what would happen if a hundred and twenty thousand acre feet were withdrawn. But again, you were not satisfied with that information because of the twenty-five percent achievement of the projection the city had made for ASR two. Aren't, aren't you presenting-
That is correct.
Aren't you presenting the city and its consultants with an unsatisfiable objection in that the, the city and its consultant can develop and present information, but your attitude is that, that you're not comfortable with it because the city has been wrong in a prior instance with a prior projection? How can the city ever develop-
I would say that that is not correct. I don't feel that the city has bear the burden of proof yet. Messed up in my lifetime before. I've overcame it. I feel that the city could do the same. I just don't feel that they put enough time into this study. I feel that, I feel that a lot more things that need to be done.
And yet, the, the specific reason that you've given more than once in your testimony for rejecting the information presented by the city is simply that the city has only achieved twenty-five percent of the recharge that was projected for ASR two. Isn't that correct?
That is correct.
Now, Mr. Carmichael, I mean, you indicated that among your concerns, you have a concern that maybe landowners should get paid or the storage of water under their property. You know that that's not a feature of the existing ASR, don't you?
I do. I do.
And. What facet of the requested permit modifications? Uh, do you think should make that a feature of the permit modifications, given that it was not a feature of the existing ASR permits?
Uh, I guess where I'm going with that statement is that I'm worried about what happens underneath my property. If, if the city is to fill the aquifer up to full status and I want to. Dig a pool in my backyard and I can't because the water table is too high. I don't feel that that's my problem because I didn't put that water in there to fill the aquifer up.
So again, Mr. Carmichael. Let, let me ask first, do you understand what the limitation is in the existing permits? As to how full the city can fill the aquifer?
I do.
And what is that limitation?
I, I believe it is ten feet below the ground level.
And again, sir, that was established in the existing air ASR permits, correct?
As far as I know.
And what, what facet of the requested permit modification? Should cause that to be revisited?
Um, it's in my opinion that if you're injecting water into the ground, all facets of the project need to be looked at.
Well, Mr. Carmichael, isn't the, the current proposal? Let, let, let me rephrase it. What facet of the current proposal do you think involves increased injection into the aquifer?
Um, by drawdown in the basin storage area. I, uh, I don't know if this map. Is the ASR basin storage area? Uh, it's just in my opinion that, uh. The aquifer could potentially be too full at times.
Doesn't it strike you, Mr. Carmichael, that that would be a reason in favor of the city's proposal? Because the proposal allows the city to. Take water to town and leave the aquifer. Unaffected. And still accumulate AMCs for that combination of actions without trying to inject additional water into a full aquifer?
I think there are multiple ways that the city state GMD could go about, uh. Lowering an aquifer.
Is it your view that the aquifer should be lowered?
No.
Do you understand? Why the ten foot limit on filling the aquifer was arrived at in the earlier stages of the ASR permit approvals?
I believe so.
Do you know if it was tied to the pre-development levels of the aquifer? That is the, the levels of water in the aquifer before. People came to the area and started pumping water out?
Uh, I'm not sure that I am, uh, able to answer that question. I don't know the answer.
Mr. Carmichael, you, you indicated also that. That one of your concerns with the proposal is that you have noted sinkholes in some sites. Along the river and you're concerned that. Drawdown and recharge of the aquifer will create underflow and sinkholes. Did I understand that correctly?
That is correct.
And again, Mr. Carmichael, to the extent that the entire point of the city's proposal. Is to not have to draw down and then recharge the aquifer to create credits. Wouldn't the concern about underflow and sinkholes actually be a point in favor of the city's proposal?
Uh, can you ask me that question a different way?
I'm not sure that I can, um, Mr. Carmichael, but I'll try. Um, let me back up. You understand that the current ASR permits allow the city to draw down the aquifer and to recharge it, don't you?
That's correct.
And so under the existing permits, the city already can do that conduct that you're worried about creating underflows and sinkholes, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, now, under the city's proposal. Right where the point of the proposal is that rather than having to draw down the aquifer to create space to recharge and then recharging it. The city's proposing to take the water to town. And skip the step of drawing down the aquifer and then refilling it. So that underflow wouldn't be created. And resulting sinkholes couldn't result. And I'm asking you, Mr. Carmichael, to the extent you've got that concern with underflow and sinkholes. Wouldn't that actually seem to you logically to be a point in favor of the city's proposal?
I do not think that it should be, uh, I don't, I don't think that the, the city is, uh. I don't think the city has proved the, uh, the burden to me. That it won't happen. And if you have AMCs. You have an extra nineteen thousand acre feet of water that you can draw on top of your natural water, right? Um. I feel that that color depression could creates, uh, uh, a heck of a sinkhole. And if you go to, uh, start injecting water in that color depression, it's my opinion that you have to have some sort of ground movement there.
Mr. Carmichael, do you understand that under the current permits as they stand? The city can attain that nineteen thousand acre feet of credits by pumping the aquifer down with its native rights. And then recharging the aquifer to accumulate those credits.
I do.
So how does the credits being an AMC versus physical recharge credit form change that, that analysis at all?
Uh, it's my opinion that, uh, with your forty thousand acre feet of natural native water rights, your nineteen thousand acres of recharge credits. Um, that this, this type of pumping could get up, go on for multiple years consecutively during a drought. And that is where, uh, that's where I'm worried about the, the ground moving.
And wouldn't that be the same though, whether the credits are physical recharge credits that exist in the, in the permits now? Or whether they're AMCs that are in the proposal?
I would say it wouldn't matter which credit it is.
Also, in, in your direct testimony, Ms. Wendling elicited. From you a range of fears relating to the delays in DWR impairment investigations. And implementation of remedies. And my, my question for you there, Mr. Carmichael. Isn't that the case in, in any impairment investigation with any water right, that there's going to be some delay in the investigation?
That is correct.
Do you think that, that because of that? The state should just cancel all existing water rights because it, it takes too long to adjudicate and, and, uh. Come to remedies for an impairment?
I do not, but I do feel that DWR does a very good job issuing groundwater rights in our area. And, uh, making sure that these impairments do not happen. Uh, I don't think that that has been done in this scenario.
You understand that, that the, uh, DWR does at times approve junior water rights, don't you, Mr. Carmichael?
I do.
And that the premise of a junior water right. Um, is that there may not be enough water there to satisfy the junior right and senior rights. Isn't that the case?
It is.
And when the, the junior rights are approved by the state anyway. Doesn't that come with the premise that? If an impairment results, that junior right is going to have to be administered.
It is.
And so it's, it's a regular occurrence in the state process. That, that permits are approved with knowledge that there may be a future need to administer the junior right, correct?
I would say so, but I think that it's duly noted every time that, uh, that it's a possibility.
You don't think that the state should refuse to approve all new water right applications because of the delay that there could be in an impairment investigation, do you?
I don't.
Mr. Carmichael, you, you also noted that you would support permit conditions that would require. The city's native rights to be used before credits. And I'm going to ask you as to that, did you read the city's proposal to see if that was part of the proposal?
I'm fairly certain that my statement there was, uh, I had not seen any permit conditions stating. That you had to use your native rights first or your, uh, credits first.
Do you know whether the city proposed that it would use its native rights first?
I have, I do not know.
Mr. Carmichael, in, in terms of, uh. Use or lose an annual accounting. Do any of your customers use the flex plan mechanisms that are available under the Kansas Water Rights Act?
I'm not sure.
Do you know what flex plans are?
I am vaguely aware of them.
Can you, can you explain to us your understanding of what they are and how they work?
Uh, I think it's either a three or a five year timeframe and you can, you can move some water around. To make, to make it work, but at the same time you lose a certain part of your water, right? When you do that.
I don't have further questions for the witness.
Okay, Ms. Murray, does DWR have any questions? I do not, no. Hey, Mr. Stuckey, how about GMD?
Ryan does it.
Thank you. Just, just a few questions. Mr. Carmichael, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right, I just had a few follow-up questions to clarify my understanding of, uh, regarding some questions you were just asked. So a moment ago, you were asked some questions both by Mr. McLeod and Ms. Wendling. Regarding irrigation systems and the cost of various irrigation systems and, and things of that nature. Do you recall those questions?
I do.
And one question that was asked is, you know, what adaptations you've made to the systems? Based on salinity in the water. And I think one thing you said was, was there was PVC pipelining that was now put in the systems and. Some enhancements, I believe, to the motors, things of that nature. Is, is that what you said in your testimony?
It was.
And let me just ask you this. I'm not sure this was answered, but. What is the additional cost of adding this, uh, equipment to the irrigation systems? And I know that every irrigation system is, is different, but, but in general, what's the added cost of, of trying to add these protections to guard against salinity?
Uh, I would say a range of thirty to sixty thousand based on length of machine.
And let me also ask you this. So you testified about certain areas of the aquifer. Where there's salinity and certain areas of the aquifer where there's not as much, uh, salinity, um, just based on your general awareness. Is that correct?
It is.
Let me clarify, if there was an area in the aquifer where there was not as much salinity. And in fact, the risk was very low that there would be salinity in the water. If the added cost to guard against this, um, chloride is thirty to sixty thousand dollars. Would you be able then to sell a cheaper irrigation system in an area where there's less salinity?
Yes.
So in other words, if you're in a part of the aquifer where the chloride movement ha- has not affected yet. The cost could be thirty to sixty thousand dollars less for the irrigator in that area?
That is correct.
So alternatively, if we're in an area of, of the aquifer where the salinity is much greater. It's costing on average for each irrigation system, it's costing the irrigator thirty to sixty thousand dollars more to guard against that?
That is correct.
I want you to go back to exhibit sixty-eight, the very last page in the map. That you were asked about by mo- both Ms. Wendling and Mr. McLeod.
I'm there.
As you can see on, on this map, uh, there's. There's some different, um, wells that are noted. There's IW thirty-six C. Um, to the south on this map toward the very bottom. IW three six zero, you see that well?
Yes, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's C three six C. My, it's so small, my, my eyesight was not as good there. Um, uh, changing it to thirty-six C, you still see that at the very bottom?
I do.
Okay, and then just above that, it appears is IW. Thirty-two C, if I'm reading that correctly. Do you see that one just north?
I do.
And on this map, it looks like if, if we were to analyze the legend at the bottom. It appears to me that those two wells are about two miles apart. Is that right?
I would agree with that.
And just so I understood your testimony. Is your well pretty much smack dab in between, uh, your domestic well? Is it pretty much smack dab in between, uh, those two wells I just identified?
Yes.
So in other words, just so in a general sense, the testimony is clear. Right now, you're just on the cusp of being affected by the chloride movement. Is that right?
Unfortunately, you are correct.
But to further clarify, under, unlike Mr. Bazor who had wells that were already being impacted by the chloride movement. You aren't quite affected a- at this juncture, correct?
I am not.
However, what we see, and I'm not going to ask you in any kind of technical sense, these questions were all asked and answered by experts previously. But as you can see from this particular map, it, it indicates. In the explanation at the bottom, a number of different pumping scenarios. Is that right?
That is correct.
And if I were just to proffer to you that one of the pumping scenarios. As shown by the blue line is, uh, double Wichita municipal pumping and no irrigation pumping. Would you agree that that? Is what the map appears to explain?
I would agree.
And would you also agree that if we look at where that light blue line then would be? Where the chloride movement would be based on that pumping scenario? Would you then agree that you would be impacted by the chloride movement at that point?
I would agree with that.
And in fact, you know, we see a lot of dots on this map. Would you agree that? Other wells would also then be impacted by that pumping scenario?
I would agree.
And so in other words, even though the chloride movement may not be impacting you now. If one of these alternative pumping scenarios occurred that was modeled. In this map, if that occurred, it could impact you and it could impact some other, uh, water users. Is that right?
That is correct.
So let me clarify this. You indicated that your domestic well adds value to your property. Is that right?
Yes. Yes.
And in fact, your domestic, y- your domestic well, uh, supplies water to your house and things of that nature you testified to, right?
That's correct.
Do you have any knowledge of the impact losing that domestic well and that water to your house? Do you have any knowledge of the impact that would cause to the value of your property?
Uh, I do, but I'm not going to state that I know fully.
Well, Mr. Carmichael, I'm not asking you to state fully, I'm asking you to state in a general sense, if you have knowledge as to a gen- generally, how that would decrease your property value?
I do.
Please testify in that nature.
Uh, I think that if my, uh, domestic well were to become unusable with no rural water, uh, my house would only be worth the value of the land that it sits on.
And what, do you have any idea of what that financial difference would be for you?
For me personally, it would be substantial.
And substantial as in thousands of dollars, tens of thousands of dollars, um, what, what are we talking? What do you mean by substantial?
Hundreds of thousands of dollars.
And have you, there was a bunch of questions asked about, uh, essentially taking water from underneath your land and the impacts that that could have, if if that's what the city proposal indeed did. Do you recall some of those questions?
I do.
Just to clarify the record, have you given the city of Wichita um, permission to withdraw aquifer maintenance credits from underneath your land?
I have not.
Are you so giving the city of Wichita permission to do so?
Not at this time.
And so I think this question is already clear, uh, as far as your expectation to the value of your land and the fact that it has this water right, you have that expectation, don't you?
I do.
Just a moment ago, you were asked, um, some questions about whether there was any difference between the ASR physical recharge approach and the aquifer maintenance credit recharge approach. Do you recall those questions?
I do.
And you were asked if if there were any distinct differences between the two. Do you recall some of those questions?
That's correct.
And I believe that you sat in this hearing and testified that you've been in this hearing a good chunk of the time, correct?
That's correct.
And you also testified that you've at least read portions of the city's proposal and have a general knowledge of the city's proposal, is that correct?
It is correct.
So as you were asked to try and differentiate between the two, let me ask you this. With respect to the physical recharge credits, is there water, um, injected into the aquifer?
There is.
Let me ask you this, with respect to aquifer maintenance credits and under the city's new proposal, are they actually injecting water into the aquifer?
They are not.
And are you aware of the extent to which the city has been able to successfully accumulate physical recharge credits in the past?
I am.
Tell me what your knowledge is in that regard.
Uh, based off of their initial projection, they have only been able to do approximately twenty-five percent of that projection.
Do you have a fear, based on the testimony you listened to, that if the city were to be able to accumulate aquifer maintenance credits, where they accumulate this credit to take water back out of the ground by just pumping straight to the city of Wichita, do you have the fear that if they're able to do that, they'll be able to accumulate far more credits than they they're currently accumulating?
I do.
And if they're able to accumulate far more credits by just merely pumping water straight to the city of Wichita and then later have this right to take water out of the aquifer, it, would that be detrimental to you?
Not only me, but my neighbors and the equus beds.
So in other words, as we, and there's a lot of other distinctions I could make, but just in a general sense, as we try and distinguish between the physical recharge credits and the aquifer maintenance credit proposal, is it your belief that the aquifer maintenance credit proposal will be more detrimental to you and, uh, neighboring, uh, water right holders?
I believe so.
You were asked, uh, some questions about, uh, a reverse osmosis system and whether or not it's possible or theoretical to, uh, put that system in the pumping equipment that you sell or that you service. Do you recall some of those questions?
I think Mr. McLeod was, uh, wanting me to install that in my house.
Okay, well, let me back up. You, uh, also sell, um, irrigation equipment and you talked about motors and irrigation qu- equipment and things of that nature, is that right?
That's correct.
So if the question was only asked with respect to your house, um, do you have knowledge, uh, about that with respect to the irrigation equipment that you you sell?
I do.
Tell me your knowledge in that regard.
Uh, we've been trying to come up with a solution to be able to, uh, pump saltwater, uh, there's, there is some things on the market, they're terribly expensive. Um, there's no proof that they work yet, uh, like I said, they're brand new. Um, I'm often here with reverse osmosis. I'm guessing that it would work really good on a, uh, twenty gallon a minute well. I'm guessing it probably wouldn't work so good on a thousand gallon a minute well.
Do you have any general sense of of whether or not there would be a significant added cost if we were to include this reverse osmosis system?
Um, my guess would be that cost would be very significant.
And what does very significant mean to you? Is that thousands of dollars? What are we, what are we talking here?
Uh, I'd say tens of thousands.
So you testified that the impact on irrigators of the salinity already based on current, um, protections is thirty to sixty thousand, so we're talking in addition to that current expense, if we were to add this reverse osmosis, that would be an additional tens of thousands of dollars added on cost for these irrigators?
That is correct.
Now, you were asked a number of questions about reverse osmosis, and I understand that you actually have boots on the ground in the sense that you work on these motors and you sell these irrigation systems as part of your job, and so in that sense, you're extremely knowledgeable about that. But let me ask you this, as you sat in this hearing, listened to the city of Wichita's experts testify and also read the city of Wichita's proposal, did you hear any testimony or see anything in the proposal about these reverse osmosis systems and using that as a protection for irrigators?
I did not.
So in fact, the city of Wichita, although they asked you questions about this, they didn't testify as to the viability of these reverse osmosis systems, did they?
They did not.
And in fact, it's not listed in their proposal, is it?
Not to my knowledge.
Would that be additional assurances or testimony, uh, that you would like to hear from the city of of Wichita in the future?
Yes.
And indeed, do you believe that to the extent the city of Wichita's A- uh, AMC credit proposal adds additional costs to irrigators in the form of a reverse osmosis system and in the form of lining the pipes and enhancing the motors, do you believe that's a cost that the city of Wichita should bear?
I do.
I don't have further questions.
Thank you, Ms. Wendling.
Mr. McLeod asked you some questions about junior water rights being approved subject to possible future, um, I can't think of the word right now. Adjudication, essentially. Do you recall that testimony?
I do.
Are you also familiar with permits in the basin storage area being denied?
I am.
And do you recall the reasons for those denials?
Uh, I would say a rather large percentage of them were denied due to applying in an over appropriated area.
And do you recall whether safe yield was a factor and whether those permits would be denied?
It was.
And do you know whether or not the, um, AMC or physical recharge credit withdrawal has been subject to a safe yield analysis?
I do not think that it has.
Mr. McLeod also asked you if you knew where the city would be required to use their native water rights first or something along those lines. Do you recall that questioning?
I do.
Can I have you turn to, um, city's exhibit one, which is the proposal located in that black binder, it should be at the front. And I'll have you start at page three dash five.
What, uh, what tab was it?
It should be tab number one. I think there's a cover letter in there that's not in mine, but.
Page three dash five.
And do you see a heading, three period dot four?
I do.
And what is that heading?
Proposed.
Proposed AMC permit conditions.
Now, if you'll take a minute to review the seven permit conditions listed on page three six, let me know if you see a permit condition requiring native credits to be used first.
I do not.
Mr. McLeod also addressed your concerns regarding sinkholes, um, by discussing that AMCs would not require injecting water into the aquifer. Can you, on page three dash five, read the second to last sentence for me?
The city will continue to maintain an ASR operational priority focused on development of physical recharge credits when and where groundwater levels are at elevations that facilitate physical recharge capacity.
So the, does the continued physical recharge in conjunction with the additional AMC option give you concerns about potential sinkholes?
Most definitely.
No further question. Mr. McLeod, do you have any further questions for this witness?
I don't.
Thank you. Any questions from DWR?
I don't have any more questions, no.
Thank you. Any more questions from the GMD, Mr. Stuckey?
No, your honor.
Okay, that being the case, thank you, Mr. Carmichael, you're excused.
Thank you.
And this may be a good time for a short break since we're between witnesses, so let's take about ten minutes. We're going off the record right now.
You can just let Bill do whatever he's comfortable with. He might not be worried about it. We could even move some of these, um. They're really hard to see through.
Yeah, reflections and everything else. It was kind of like, which do I do here?
Okay, so here, these are our, whatever. So, we're gonna do, I guess. We only have the one permit for you. But I mean, you can kind of base it off of, Bill's map, it'll show you Bentley very well, but Bentley and the river, and then the actual road. Um, so on the, when it comes, when we come back to them, I'll show you. Richard was using the touchscreen and it doesn't work in there, so I think if you use the track pad and just tap it.
Before you talk, can I?
Unmute the drive. It shows up on the bottom left screen, there's a mute on you. On the track pad will work.
Anything in the books, just tell me as much as possible, because I got no problem talking, but doing two things one time on purpose.
Well, no one else really seems to be referring to the exhibit, so that's good. Um, and I'm going to just focus on hours. I don't know, because we've already covered it with the other two, I just don't know. All right. We're almost done.
The mind you with it is, is, with whatever device I want to use, I want to be able to see if I have chloride. If it's still traveling through the water, to me, it's still in there.
Well, if there was some way to separate it, okay, then you gotta put in like a saltwater filter.
Sure.
Like, oh, I'm feeling, you gotta go eighteen hundred feet to the armbuckle, or whatever it is.
Yeah. Yeah.
Rich, I was wondering, you know, you talked about how the quality in the water is better, deeper in the aquifer when you're, why did you drill that one well on the banks of the arby, just forty feet deep?
Because that's where we were outside of the circle, two mile ring, to start with, you know, and to see what her water quality was, and, and, you know, didn't want to go log the first time, go two hundred feet down, with the cost of drilling wells. Yeah. So, start small and go from there.
Yeah.
And again, it's sort of upside down, sort of hydrogeologically, I guess, as to, by the water qualities, worse on top, and not as bad below. That my only thought is, you got the river Louvion up here, and it's, as it moves in, it moves into the top, and then the density draws it down a little further away. I'm not a geologist, but that's.
Okay.
Have you sense of it? And then Cleveland's is a, you know, have a big impact on the underground flow, would you know?
Yeah.
Anyway, it's, it's science, but it's not exact science.
Can I get your name, sir?
Bill Karp.
C A R, please.
Correct.
I have not.
Gonna need oxygen. I said, I'm gonna need oxygen. It echoes in here behind the shield, too.
This Zoom is available to whoever wanted to log into, is that right?
Right.
So, if we have, if we need conversations on what to do after today, I don't want to do that.
Right, and I'm not controlling the recording and broadcast, so.
Let's say a discussion is to rebuttal witnesses and all of that, that's.
Yeah. We can maybe shut everything down.
Yeah, you can just send out invitations to whoever you want, and they're the only ones that can access it. I know, but, but to continue that today, like, to go off the record and have a conversation with counsel, I don't want to do that today if other people.
No. Unless, unless you shut down the Zoom call completely, just end it, like, you'll lose those, you'll lose those lawyers.
We could just send out a link for the follow-up conversation.
Yeah.
Need for now?
You can do it today, after this one's finished, you can just send out another link.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll join that one.
Or, if, and I thought it's Ron that earlier, we could ask, we could send three second link and send it to counsel.
And then. Say again?
We could ask Ron to, or to send out a new link just to counsel, and then when we're done with the hearing portion, we can hang up and then dial another one.
Okay, that's what I'd like to do, so, I'll ask Ron to set up a new one that you can, five minutes after the fact, if I can do.
I'm just gonna put enough time to hang up and click on a new one.
Well, that's fine, and you don't, you don't need to report.
Okay.
Thank you, Juan, we are.
We have Bill Karp.
Everybody raise your hand, please, sir. You just solemnly, is your computer on?
Oh, here, it's clear, not even over with me.
You go ahead and turn it off, boys, for you. Because we have to turn it on.
He's not even, he's not even in Zoom.
You just solemnly swear, testimony shall be given, the cause not pending will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do. I seem though it's supposed to be.
You need to turn it off when she's questioned.
Gotcha.
All right, Mr. Karp, will you state your name for the record, please?
Bill Karp.
And can you tell us your occupation?
Crop producer. Corn, soybeans, wheat, irrigated, on behalf of what we do.
And how long have you been doing that?
Hmm. I'm getting old, forty years.
All right. Can you tell us a little bit about your experience with water rights?
My experience with water rights is whatever I need to know in order to be in compliance with the wells that I have permits on, or my landlord's wells that I report on, and be sure that we're always in compliance. I have developed a couple of wells, which I needed to know that process in order to obtain a, a temporary permit or your appropriation, and then, you know, to get a full water right.
And in what way do you rely on the equus beds?
I have one, two, three, I have four permitted wells that I'm an owner on the property, and I have one leased well that I rely on for irrigation. And I have one rental property that has a home and has a domestic well for that purpose.
And of those, are they all in the basin storage area?
No. One, I believe only one is in the basin storage area, the others are just like one or two miles south of the area.
Well, you referred to the first tab in the intervenor's binder, and find the map, I believe it's page two, that has your name on it?
Yes.
Does this appear to be an accurate reflection of your water permit in the basin storage area?
Yes.
And which index cell do you believe that that's located in?
Thirty-one.
I would like to move, and I would like to admit intervenor's exhibit one, which is the map of the three witnesses' water permits. For your, the well, the permit in the basin storage area, do you have a backup plan if the equus bed becomes contaminated or unavailable?
No, I wouldn't say that I have a backup plan.
Have you studied irrigation conservation or water rights?
No, what you'd call study. You say, or water rights, did you ask that at the end, study? I, I try to be knowledgeable enough that I can perform what I need to do inside of my business and, and dealing with the different agencies to, to be in compliance, and what water, you know, how much water we can use, and when and where, I mean, even stuff such as water meters, there's eight inch pipe, there's eight, there's eight and an eighth inch pipe, there's ten, ten and five sixteen, I mean, I've learned that you can't just grab one eight inch water meter and throw in another pipe, because it may be a one eighth inch off, and we have a different gauge pipe, and so, do I study it? I don't sit down and read the book, but we seem to come across a lot of stuff every day that it seems like we're studying it all the time. You asked about, what was your, the other things that you asked about besides the water rights?
Irrigation or water conservation?
Um, yeah, the conservation, to the extent that, you know, what can I do that's the most, what do you call it, return on my investments the best? I, I look at a lot of it from my capital income expense standpoint. Do I look at it from the standpoint of a, you know, just how much water can I absolutely save the world? I'm probably not that person.
Have you made efforts to conserve water or contribute to a fuller offer?
I have. Probably the biggest expense we did is, we had an extra, just under eighty acres that was flood irrigated when I leased it from my landlord, and at my own expense. Well, I, I did explore using some of what they call whip money, or some supplemental subsidies from the government, and, I don't know, it looked a little slow, and, you know, lots of bookkeeping, and finally it was like, you know, this is never going to happen. So, I bought, I bought a pivot and turned eighty acres of flood irrigation into sprinkler, and that, that's big conservation, and it's big money. But we, and we did that. And then, I would say, all but one, most of our systems have the latest, I say the latest, we use the long drops, get down away from the evaporation, and, and the newer type nozzles and stuff, I mean, we've got one system, the system that's in index thirty-one, of course, it's a salt, that's an area that's already has some salt, that has a lined pivot that Mr. Carmichael was talking about, and the drops on that pivot, they're clear down to my knee, and just kind of have a, I don't know what Josh would call them, but they're a spray nozzle, that's, you know, you go out there and look at it, you're like, is that water in that? But it does, and that's expensive, because it's twice as many drops, if not three times as many, yeah, we spend money for conservation.
And is there a future credit for the water that you're saving with your conservation efforts?
Uh, no.
Can you tell us about the, I think you call it developing a water right, but what was the process you went through to obtain a water right?
Well, first thing it is, I went to District Two, and I asked them, in my, I think they do a two mile circle, but here's my point where I'd like my well. And I believe they do a two mile circle of safe yield, meaning they go look and see if, if there's already so many wells in that area that is appropriated fully or not fully appropriated, okay, there's, there's eighty acre feet left, or there's five hundred acre feet left, how much do you want? Well, I'm doing, I guess, under its regular quarter mile circle, there'd be a hundred and thirty acres, and what do they give us, one point? Or what's available is like one point three for that purpose? So, what, a hundred and eighty acre feet, hundred, whatever comes out to a hundred and seventy acre feet under a standard quarter mile system? I would request that. And District Two would say, okay, well, we're gonna, if we, we're gonna move forward for this, I pay a, I pay a, not a fine, but, you know, you pay, you pay to move it forward, and then they, District Two, as I understood, is the water district, they help you fill out all paperwork, and, or, you know, assist you in filling out your paperwork, and where it's at, and what it all is, and then it goes to DWR, and DWR looks it over, and everyone decides, safe yield, do we have safe yield or not? Is the area over appropriated, is my understanding? If it's not, and I think they even send out a, a notice to wells that are close in the area of land, on irrigation wells or domestic wells, I guess. Domestic wells get an opportunity to say, no, this, this is going to affect me or not, and then you have the opportunity to go to them and say, I don't think it will, or, you know, whatever. If you go through that whole process, then you are issued a, what is it? I can't remember what the first one is, when it's not a true water right, but a, a right to appropriate, I guess, something like that. And then, you begin your, you get your system out and drill your well, you can't, let's see, there's, there's some order in there, and you only have a certain amount of time to drill that well, I mean, you've got to do it within a certain period, and pump that well to a certain period, you can't just go get this water appropriation and then walk off and leave it. So then, you've got to get the water, you have to get the water going and get it happening, get a system on it, and from that point then, you have to report. um, from that point then you have to report all your usage and you have a five year period, you should perfect that. And you can perfect it, you, if you use, say, let's say it's one hundred and seventy acre foot, if you use up to that one hundred and seventy acre feet at some point in that first five years, then you have fully perfected it and you go for the full water permit. There is a five year extended permit if, say, it doesn't, it rains quite a bit through the first five years or you don't grow crops that need that water and you don't reach your, your fullest perfection, you have another five years to pull the, the, the greatest pumping year you have, not in excess of your appropriation, that becomes your water right.
So you mentioned that there's a standard of a one point three when you're determining the quantity.
I think irrigation in Sedgwick County, it's one point three acre feet of water per acre to be watered.
So you don't get to decide, this is the amount of water I want, it's a formula laid out for you?
That would be the maximum.
And if you thought you needed more water than that, you don't have an option?
No, not as irrigation.
And is that, do you know if that one point three irrigation number is based on average precipitation or the water needed during a drought?
I, I think it's, uh, it's not during a drought, I think it's aggregate water. I believe, for all, I don't know who came up with that, whether it's K-State or what, I mean, I think it's average water expected to need to grow a crop in South Central Kansas on most years. It, it's not a drought, it's not a drought number.
And say you wanted to change your use to put a fountain in your field, do you know if you'd be able to do that?
Hmm, I don't know. You might, but yeah, I, I think you, I don't know, I, I assume you can do some changes of use. I don't know to what extent, um, I do know there's a, you know, I, I, I'm in an area where there's a lot of sand pits, dredged sand pits and they have to have evaporated water rights. I go, I'm assuming that if I wanted to do a sand pit, I could, you know, take my water right and ask for a change of, change of use on that same area, I believe, I, I believe that could be done.
Do you have, what happens to your annual appropriation if you don't use it?
Um, the, it's, it's, it's a per annum deal. You know, if I've got a hundred and seventy acre foot water right and I use one hundred and ten feet of it, um, there's eighty acre feet, I, I, that's never, that's not my water anymore, it's gone.
Would you be able to store that water?
No.
And you mentioned some annual reporting, I believe, what is necessary to maintain your water right?
Well, um, everything's metered and, uh, we report at the end of, it is, it's a January one, a January one deal. Of course, we have a season, we don't tend to water in the middle of the winter here in Kansas, thankfully, or I say Kansas, South Central Kansas, I think that way they do, but in this part of the world, you know, we don't generally have to start a pivot up in January, but it's your per annum, you read your meter every year, you report what your meter reading is and, and on that report, you're expected to do the addition and subtraction and, and bring down, you know, I, I report my meter reading, but then I'm supposed to do the calculations and report, this is minimum acre feet or gallons that I, that I pumped from this permit. And, uh, what more was, what was the question completely again?
What is needed to maintain your water right?
Okay, so you've got to report that, um, you can't go over your, your level, um, there's a penalty deal. Oh, I wish I'd had that in my head, I should have looked that up this morning. It, it's substantial. It seemed to me like if, I had it figured out one time, if you made even like one, one extra circle, one extra pass, which I think in most cases we figure that's, uh, what, like eleven acre feet on a quarter section of a three quarter inch pass, I think that's like a ten thousand dollar fine, it, it, it's like five, six, seven, eight hundred dollars a day. It's more than that, it gets more than that, I forgot, but it's substantial. In my world, it's substantial, it would, it runs into thousands of dollars if you run over two or four or five days. And, uh, so there's an incentive and, and then the first year it's that, then the second year it's that, plus you lose a percentage of your water right, I believe. And if you do it a third year, you lose your water right for a number of years, I, I don't remember the exact of it, but it's, it's in that form. Um, so it's expensive and eventually you would want to lose your water right if you over pumping consistently or, well, I say consistently, I think three years, it could be this year and twenty years from now, as far as I know, if you're into the third year, you're, you're pulled, um. Also, there's abandonment, that if you don't use your water, uh, there's abandonment rules and you can lose, lose, may off of that too. I don't, I don't know what all the technicals are of it, but I do know it exists.
And have you attempted to get additional water rights?
When you say additional, like a, a new permit or adding to an old permit?
Either one.
I've gotten new permits or attempted for new permits. I've asked and I did, I think I believe I asked one time for extra acres on a well I knew that would, uh, supply the, and, and add some extra acres with a longer pivot and I had the room to do it. And, uh, I asked about getting increased, I don't even think I asked for increased acre foot, I think I just asked for the permission to water on extra acres. I wasn't talking about any more water, I was just asking for the permission to water more acres because we had conserved and we had done things that gave us extra water out of our water permit and I was not, I was told that would not be allowed either.
And do you recall who told you that?
Pardon?
Do you recall who said that it would not be allowed?
It would have been district two.
And have you ever been told additional water is not available in the basin storage area?
Uh, yes.
On what grounds?
On what grounds, uh, over appropriated.
Do you understand that to be a common issue faced by many within the basin storage area?
Well, it just kind of become common knowledge to some extent, uh, I did ask for that one, it would have been on a piece of land just south of Bentley, the town of Bentley. Um, I was requesting, I say for, uh, my landlady, um, and I was told that that area was over appropriated, going into it, I kind of knew that, I mean, but, but I thought, hey, if you don't ask, you don't know. Um, and I've, um, oh, and yes, uh, the, in the, the well that I have listed as the one in index thirty-one, I do own the quarter section to the south of that and when we purchased that property or we're looking at purchasing that property, I asked if it was possible there was water available to the south so that I could water the south quarter section of this half section. And that was prior to my ownership, that was a quick question to district two and their quick answer was, I can tell you that, I can tell you verbally, verbally, because somebody has already asked about it due to the fact that that property was for sale. So, um, I believe Mr. Bay said to me, says, well, I, if you want to spend the money, I can do an official, but I can tell you the answer is, it's not there because I already looked at it for someone else. And I took the verbal as my answer, I didn't think, well, I needed to go hire Burns and Mack to find out if there's enough water there that I could really do this, that they had done it wrong, so.
Well, by concerning by the conservation, sorry.
So the conservation efforts that you've invested in resulting in water savings, to be told that you cannot use that on additional acreage. Um, were you given a reason?
Um, I guess I, I guess I assume that's just kind of how water authority is written.
But it's a water right.
I was not given a reason, no, I don't, no, I don't know that I was given a reason and I don't recall whether I asked or not, I mean, it's been, it's been a while and, and I don't remember exactly the whole details of it, other than, no, that probably wouldn't, you probably wouldn't be allowed to do that.
Does that disentithize?
Pardon?
Does that make you less likely to invest in further?
Conservation? Well, like I said, any conservation we do, we do it based on return on investment, if I can spend a thousand dollars on conservation and I can gain my thousand dollars back over time, I mean, quick enough time, you know, whatever you want, a fifteen, twenty percent return on your money or ten or five, or for a farmer, we try to get one percent, but, um, I base my conservation decisions mostly on that, but I do have at least one, especially my leased water right, that, um, you know, it was flood irrigated at one time and so now there's corners that don't get watered anymore and then just the less water we use. I mean, I could probably go water another eighty or hundred acres somewhere. And, and you can do and ask for, you can do some, I know you can do some requests for, for move, but out of that, but out of that one well, if I remember right, what it was, it was kind of odd, um, you can, you can request to move it, well, they got three hundred feet, half mile, two miles, I think it's something like I could request to move it two mile down the road and put in a second, a second well, but I could not do it out of the existing well. I couldn't, y- yeah, I, I, it, I think that that's right, I, I don't mean to be vague, but it's been a while since I did it, so, but I remember thinking, well, that's kind of funny, I can't do it out of the existing well, but I could go dig another well two miles away and do it. So there is some, you can do some moving around, I don't know the exact details, I've never gotten one that I pushed it far enough to find out, so.
So with the limits that have been placed on water users due to the over appropriated nature of the basin storage area, how do you understand that a, a right to withdraw up to a hundred and twenty thousand acre feet in maintenance credits would now be allowed?
Backup, Tessa, state that again, I was not evidently listening for the first five words, so.
Okay, so, understanding the limitations you've experienced and others with the over appropriated aquifer in the past, how do you understand there would now be a hundred and twenty thousand acre feet to grant in AMC's if the aquifer is truly over appropriated?
Well, how do I understand it? Um, I guess I understand it to the point that at least district two had established, I believe forty years plus ago, that in that storage basin area that it was over appropriated and that there is no more available water in that area, no more additional usable water in that area without causing problems, low wells and such. From the AMC's, which the city is promoting, I guess I see it as that they decided that district two doesn't know what they're talking about and that there's extra water there to be used. All you got to do, you'll get an engineer to prove that district two was wrong and that there's all kinds of available water, I mean, a hundred and twenty thousand acre feet, that's a lot of pivots. Um, that's a lot of landowners that have missed out on wealth, if that's not, if that's there, there's been a lot of landowners that have been told no, that they should have been told yes, if it's there. Um, so I guess, I guess the thing is, if you've got the money to hire an engineer and prove there's water there, you can have water if you're the average fella and you don't have any extra money to do. Or, you know, most of us are trying to get a hundred and twenty acre feet, it's pretty hard to justify paying the price of a, of a, of an engineer to, to go and, and get a hundred and twenty acre foot water right, if I was going to put up a thousand pivots, maybe I could afford it. Um, so at best, if, if the water's there and we've been wrong, then for forty years, people have been told no, have been told no wrong and they were first at the table, uh, or the water's not there. And we've decided that if we say it's there, it's there, that I don't know, I mean, I'm skeptical on both sides of it here. It's like, either the water was there and we were lied to, or the water isn't there, take your pick.
And if the water is there, is there an economic impact to merely leaving it in storage rather than making a beneficial use?
Um, I guess he won't mind, he gave me the permit, Floyd Holly. I'd said, we were at dinner one evening, I said, man, I wish I could find somebody that who had taken, I'm not, I'm sorry. I hope he doesn't mind me using his name there, he gave me the permit and I think it's even in the exhibit here somewhere. He has a permit that he requested a water right forty, I believe it's forty years ago now, um. He was told that it's over, that area is appropriately over appropriated, so that, let's assume, I don't know whether it was a quarter section or not, I didn't think to look at what he requested in acre feet, but let's assume it's a quarter section, that's a hundred and thirty acres. I'm going to say he's missed out on at least a hundred bushel a year for forty years on each acre. Anybody got their calculator running? Let's do it on an acre, I guess, um, I'm a hundred bushels short of corn for forty years. Is that forty thousand bushel in my basket? Let's say it's forty thousand bushel. Average price of four thousand doll, or four dollars a bushel for my, it's probably a little three seventy, but for my ease of, so four fours each acre, each acre. Um, Mr. Holly, I believe, missed out on sixteen thousand dollars on a hundred and thirty acres over forty years. How many million is that? That's one person. If we could have done that a hundred and twenty times, well, that's not a hundred and twenty times, he's talking about a hundred and thirty acres, they're talking about a hundred and twenty thousand, they're talking. So I guess they'd be talking about a thousand times. So if we did that over the community a thousand times, how many millions of dollars that into the community that we've missed out on?
And when you say into the community, can you elaborate on what you mean by that?
Well, I'd say the, the Bentley Hallstead, the aquifer area, that aquifer area, where, wherever it's been said is over appropriated and you can't get a, a permit, if I can, I mean, I've got new permits just south of the, the basin area, I can't, I couldn't claim that there, I got what I, I got when I asked, but I'm talking about anything that is in the area that is said to be over appropriated and it's been for years and years. Um, that's wealth that the area, that's wealth that could have been created in the area.
And is that limited to the landowners and farmers or does it have a broader?
I think everybody else gets it, but the landowner. He'd have, he, he will have gotten the millions of dollars, the, the lenders would have gotten the millions of dollars, but they would have spread them to the co-op, they would have spread them to Mr. Carmichael's type business. Um, they spread them to the car dealers, the machinery dealers. I mean, you know, farmers are notable that we're, we don't, uh, we don't have great big high returns on investment, we go standard. So it's huge amounts of money that has not been brought into the neighborhood over forty years.
Now, the Mr. Holly you mentioned, is he the same Mr. Holly who gave public comments regarding this denial?
He is.
The city modeled a drought based off of the two thousand and eleven, twelve, two thousand and twelve period. Repeating for a total of an eight year drought. Going back to your experience in two thousand and eleven and two thousand and twelve, how were you impacted by that drought scenario?
Uh, in Sedgwick County, I had one well, I've obtained most of my well since then, but my one leased well, it started surging when we would pump flood irrigation, we had it connected to a pivot and then we were doing that eighty acres that had not yet been changed to a pivot, it started surging a little bit. Um, we never got to the point we couldn't water, but it was kind of like, this is not good. Um, that would probably be the effect I had there, I do also um, have several pivots and water permits in Pratt County. Um, we were affected there and that evidently it rained even less there and we came to the end of our, our water appropriations out there. Um, we were down to the one circle and such and that was, I guess, you know, somebody might shoot me, but that was back in the day when it's kind of like, well, I've, I've spent all this money, we've used all this water. If I quit watering now, I wasted the water and I wasted the money. So we took our chances on whether we're going to jail or not and we went ahead and pumped a couple of times. Um, and we still came up with a short crop. Um, just due to the heat and then such, and then the next year, we paid a fine, we then we paid a fine. Just due to the heat and then such. And then the next year, we paid a fine, then we paid a fine. And the next year, we had to not use our whatever over usage over pumping we did, we had to pull it off of twenty twelve. And, uh, so we were short that year too, on water. We started that way. We planted as such, we, you know, we planned on it. When we ended in eleven, we didn't know we were planning on it. And then, there was offers of doing some flex stuff showed up about that time too. But in, in Sedgwick County, in this aquifer here, surging was the worst I came up with, and, uh, I don't remember if that was eleven, twelve, or both. I know it kind of did it for two years. But that would have been the, that would have been the, the most of it there. That's funny. Sometimes it matters and sometimes it doesn't.
The, um, did you pursue a multi-year flex account?
I have, I had one at one time. Well, a lot of the time it doesn't need it. It didn't matter, so I forgot. I had one flex account. It was not in Sedgwick, it was in Pratt County. I have not done any more due to the fact that I think it's ten percent. You give up a, it's based on the usage of that particular well or that permit. If, if it's a well where you use, let's just say it's a hundred and eighty acre foot permit. If it's a well that you're pumping right up against that hundred and eighty foot most years, there's no, then, then that's where you need a flex. If, if you've got a well where, you know, you only pump a hundred and twenty acre feet annually, and you've got a one hundred and eighty acre permit, there's really no reason to give up ten percent of your water right in order to make sure you can make it the next year, because generally you have that, you've got some cushion there, I guess I should say. So really, the only wells that makes sense on is a well that you're right up against your pumping every year. They do not, I've never understood how that is, but you don't give up, you don't give up any of your water right for that one that's pumped up next to the permit every year. There's no loss there. So that makes it a positive. If you're gonna start one, though, you don't generally just want to pull one that you pumped clear up against your deal and, and pull a flex permit, because now you're starting with nothing in the bank, if per se, I guess I should say. So if I had a well that is pumped up hard against the permit every year, but then all of a sudden we get a really wet year, and I didn't pump up against it that year, you can, if you apply early enough in the fall, I think I'm right on this, that if you apply early enough in the fall, then you can take that water that you didn't use that year and apply it to your five-year flex now, and you're starting with water in the bank. So that makes it, that's the one scenario where it works, is a well that gets pumped hard most years, or I say hard, up against its maximum. And then you get a year like, ooh, good deal. I didn't use anywhere near that, and now I've got, I've got some in the bank, and I can use that and spread that flex that over my next five years. But, you know, if you start one, if you start one dry, I, it's pretty hard though. You know, because you're, you're one year to flex my, and you're one year to flex my, it could be last year, and it, it worked right that year. But, but you're gonna be scared the whole five, forty years. I say scared. You're gonna look at it as, well, I got nothing, I got nothing, I got nothing. And you could end up with a fifth year, but, so it, it's, uh, and then there, you know, you gotta watch them really close. I mean, there, of course, you're watching that well close anyway, so I guess that doesn't make any difference, but anyway. Don't tend to use them, because if you've got a well where you can serve anyway over what we've done, you know, you give up your ten percent, that doesn't make any sense. And I think it's ten percent. I'm using that number. Somebody can probably correct me before the day's over, I'm sure. But I think that's what you lose.
What investments have you made in your property based on having a water right?
What improvements have I made on my property based on that? Well, on properties that don't have a water right, I've put up a irrigation system and we grow bigger crop. I guess that would be.
Can you clarify that? You said on properties that don't have a water?
On property that did not, the way you asked the question, say, ask your question again.
Okay.
Ask your question again, please.
On property that you have a water right, what investments have you made based on having that access to water?
It would be irrigation equipment. I don't know what else I would have.
And if you lose the water, does that irrigation equipment contain, maintain its same value?
Uh, no, it would, it would lose all the value of what it costs to put it up. It would lose the value of what it costs to take it down. Um, depreciation, I mean, and when I say depreciation, that pivot's worth more to me on my property than it is on neighbors' property, because Tosh is gonna take his cut out of the middle there when they move it down the road. And so, um, you know, it's worth, it's not worth, and, and you have depreciation, which is real. I mean, there's use, you know, and if you're in a salt area, then somebody doesn't want it anyway, but I can get, I can get more out of using some equipment than my neighbor can. How's that?
Are you familiar in general with the ASR project, multiple phases, including the current modifications?
I, I, I have a general sense of it. I, I pay attention. I ask questions. I listen.
Do you understand that the program allows the storage of water in the aquas beds?
I do.
Where do you understand that water is being stored?
I understand that there's a basin area where they could, well, I know there's an area where they have recharge wells. I don't know where they're all at. I have a general idea that they're north and west of Bentley and into the west and maybe south of Holstead for the bulk of them. I don't know where they're all at exactly, but I do know that area is the heaviest area. I guess there's some basin deals where they put the water in on top of the ground, let it soak in. I don't, I don't know where those are at. I know there's one they intended to do there next to Bentley, but I've never, I don't know if they use it or not. Somebody said they didn't. I, I don't know about that. But that's what I understand it to be in, is in the bulk of where they pull their waters, and the bulk of where they put their recharge systems.
And so where that water is stored, do you know where that is in relation to your property?
They would be to the north.
Where the water is physically stored, not necessarily injected, but where the water is actually stored.
I believe the storage of it can become on beyond the aqua, the storage area, their, their pumping area. If you raise the aquifer here, it's gonna go over there. I mean, if I, you know, if you've got a water hole over, uh, water here, and there's lower ground here, and you bit a bit of a ditch, it's gonna go down, so in my, this is, this is my knowledge, is that water runs downhill and fills voids. I'm, I assume that the same thing happens under, happens underground. If you raise an area, it's gonna flow out, and if you lower an area, it's gonna flow in. The larger the quantity of the water, the bigger the area that gets raised and lowered.
So is the area where the city's storing water underneath the land that you farm?
Ask it again, Tess. I'm not sure I heard the last little bit.
Is the storage area underneath the land that you farm?
I would say what they call their. Well, it could be, it could be come under my land if they store enough, yes.
So with a full aquifer and attempting to store even more water, do you think that would be under your land?
It's possible.
Do you know the value of your water right?
Well, the value to me is the extra return on investment for growing an irrigated crop versus a dryland crop. That's my value. I don't know, but there's probably in the, there's probably a accountant's term for that, or an accounting term for that, but and then there's also the va, what value would it have if I were to sell it on the market? And I suppose that would have to do with who needs the water right, how badly they need it, and what they need to use it for. You know, I mean, it's, it's demand. It's whatever the demand is. So, no, I don't know, because generally in our area here, water rights are not auctioned off. They're not sold. Probably part of it is due to your inability to use it on another piece of ground. Um, or another, you know, there's always permitting, and there's other uses that it can be used for, but it's not simple. And unless it's just readily, uh, there, um, there's not a market for it, and you gotta have somebody who doesn't already have enough water to, uh, supply their needs, and, and they need the water, they need that water for their needs. You know, what is it that, uh, you know, there's always those deals when they have a hurricane. Everybody's talking about, well, there's people selling water for twenty dollars a, a little bottle. Well, there's a big need for it. When there's all kinds of water around and there's not a hurricane, or there's not a disaster, that bottle of water's worth whatever a few teeth can get out of it, I guess. So, timing is part of it. I mean, in the middle of a drought, and everybody's running short, that water could be worth who knows how many more times more than it is when we have plenty of water. I mean, timing is, is everything.
So of the modifications proposed by the city that we're considering, um, throughout these hearings, one of those is lowering the minimum index levels. Those lowered levels vary, um, throughout the basin storage area. I think the minimum is ten feet. What concerns do you have about lowering those levels below the nineteen ninety-three level?
There it goes. Um, well, I, on this subject, I'm gonna say I was just beginning to farm up in this area and to have a water right to worry about. I do not remember ninety-three myself. So, any information I have about ninety-three is what has come out of the discussion of all of this. And I do know that I have neighbors and stuff that said it was, it was getting dicey. People were starting to have wells that burped and pumped a little layer. It was, it was like, oh, shoot, this is, this is not, this is kind of the limit. And I also have, to me, I guess the fact that the city of Wichita agreed that this should be the safety level that should be interjected in their operating agreement with District Two and DWR. I'm taking it that everybody thought that was probably a level that we should try to attain or, or keep there, in that everybody knew that started to cause problems. People got spooked. So I guess that's my, my take on the ninety-three levels is those that were there and experienced it, including the city of Wichita, thought this is as low as we should go. So the idea that we should be pulling that down seems like at least one party has decided, well, we don't care. We can, we can live with it. Um, it doesn't sound like everybody else can necessarily live with it. Um, that would be my, and, and my other thing about it is, um, you know, if you're not gonna, how do I put this? I guess there's a part of me that just says, we've always got this level. We shouldn't go there, but maybe I should go a little further. It's kind of like kids. You know, you tell them, you shouldn't go over there, that water's deep. Well, can I go another foot? Can I just go another foot? And the one time, and now they're, now we're drowning. I mean, it's like, gimme, gimme, gimme. And pretty soon then you're in a mess. And I think, so I, I guess I look at it as a, it's a safety valve on all the other things that we want to do.
And throughout this process over the past few years, have you seen, read, or heard anything that makes you believe going below the ninety-three levels is safe for the aquifer?
I'm gonna repeat for to be sure. You say, have I seen, read, heard, or anything that would make me think that it would be safe to go before the low of the ninety-three levels? Wichita's testimony is that no problems go. I guess that's what I've had.
Do you know if the city modeled drawing down to the proposed minimum wire index levels, including the ten-foot contingency?
I, I guess all I have my awareness is that they modeled that we can use a hundred and twenty thousand acre feet, spread over a twenty thousand, over an eight-year. They modeled if we're full, what my understanding of their model is, that if we're, aquifer's full, and we run into a one hun, what a one percent drought, which would be what, eight years of, you know, that the aquifer can recover from that. What they did with the ninety-three levels, I do not know specifically. No.
You do think it's important to model whether the aquifer can recover from any of the proposed pumping scenarios?
I would say that would be paramount. I mean, we can sit here and say we can pull whatever. But if we can't, you know, I mean, I guess, here's my thought. Let's use ninety-three as a, as a, let's just use ninety-three as the, as an example. We're starting to pump air. Well, that's all great. It rains the next year, or it began raining, or, you know, we recover. If you stretch that out for years and we go to a depth that nobody's ever been to, how many years does that take us to get back just to function? I mean, we, we're, we're going into, we're going into a level, a, a situation. To me, when we start dropping below these levels, it's all what somebody thinks is gonna happen. We know what happens from ninety-three levels up. We're experienced. We are not experienced below that level. Wichita's not experienced below that level. I know they have smart people that sit around and make numbers on their computer, and they tell us, oh, it'll, okay, it'll be fine. But I don't know that they've said if they were to pull their full hundred and twenty thousand acre feet of credits along with their forty thousand, and everybody else pumping at their full amount. Is it in this, is it in their modeling that we can recover this? And how many years does it take? Does it take two years? Does it take one year? Is it twenty years? I mean, is that in this? You know, I haven't read it well enough to know that.
A, a second component to the proposal is the hundred and twenty thousand acre feet, um, in AMC's, which you briefly touched on. Do you have current concerns specific to the accumulation and future use of those maintenance credits?
It's my understanding that is an accumulation of ASRs that they have recharged and AMC's, correct? They, that, that number's altogether, correct?
That is my understanding.
I just want to be, that's my understanding. I thought I would ask before I, um, the problem with an AMC is that where did we come up with this? This is, this is not water that the city has provided the whole system. It's, it's a fake deal. I mean, it's double dipping. I mean, if I went to the bank and said, hey, I've got a thousand dollars here, but I'm gonna go deposit in the bank next door, but when I come back over here, I want you to give me two thousand dollars out of my account. I know I have a thousand dollars already in my account, but I'm gonna go put this money over in this bank, and I'm gonna put a thousand over there, but when it, when I have a dire need and, you know, the kids have wrecked the car and all this, and I need more money, I wanna come back, and you're gonna give me two thousand dollars, because I deposited a thousand over here in this bank. I'm, where does this come from? Now, I know there's water, there's extra money in that bank, I guess, or so you do, like, they could print it, but, um, you know, I know there's water in the aquifer that's there, that's below that ninety-three level. So I, I, I don't understand how it is that we're gonna take a, a gallon of water out of the Arkansas, Little Arkansas River. We're gonna send it to Wichita, which I think that's a bit of a privilege right there. That did, that was not in the original MOU, I don't believe. I think that was the change that the city come and says, hey, I know we have an agreement, we need to negotiate some more. I mean, that kind of seems to be a theme, so we need to send this water to Wichita, we, we're not getting it used, we can't get it in the aquifer. Can we send it to Wichita? And they were granted that privilege. So, I don't know, I think there's what, nearly forty thousand acre feet that they've got out of the little river acre feet, that's pretty substantial. Um, so they get the opportunity to send that to Wichita, and I don't get that, hey, that's not good enough. We need more water rights. Well, how in the world are we gonna get more water rights? Well, hey, we can, there's more water in the, there's more water in the aquifer. An engineer told us there is, so let's go ask for a credit for that, and we can pull that water out later when it's the most valuable, like in the middle of the hurricane or in the middle of the drought. We're gonna go pull that water when it's the most valuable. We're gonna store it under these people's land while it has minimal value, and then when we need it the worst, and it's the most valuable to the irrigator, and it's the most valuable to the homeowner, we're gonna go make this thing dangerous, possibly. And we're gonna sell the water while it's the most valuable, or we're gonna have the water when it's most valuable. This AMC deal is outside of water authority. They're, the only way they have that water is that they're using something that they claim they left in the aquifer. I cannot claim anything, use anything that I claim that I left in the aquifer.
If these AMCs are approved, if that, assuming that happened, how would you want to handle the priority date? Should those be junior or senior? And understanding that something stored in the aquifer for a hundred years migrates out and it's constantly being recycled, how do you attach a junior, senior date to a fluctuating?
Well, I'm first gonna qualify my answer with, I don't think anything ought to happen with AMCs. They, that, they don't, they should not exist. I don't know who come up with the term, or who, who thinks this is an idea. But, so I, I'm qualifying my answer because I'm answering it saying, I don't think this should even exist. So I guess I'd put my answer back to even the ASR credits. That if you, if they, if they got a credit on December twenty twenty, they put it in there on twenty twenty, that, that is the priority date of that credit. And that any other well that has a priority date ahead of that is ahead of that. As far as I'm concerned, they should be junior if they're junior, and if they're senior, they're senior. That would be my, that would be my answer to your question.
Why did you choose to intervene in this matter?
Excuse me, moment. The AMC's. I, I, um, if this is allowed, it's not just the equus beds aquifers that this affects. This sets precedent for the whole state. That if you what do I want to say? How do I want to put it? If you're big enough, if you're powerful enough, and you can get enough people to agree, you don't need to follow the law, you just set regulations and do what you want. Our whole, every, as, as been mentioned many times, the whole water appropriations of the state of Kansas is based on a per annum basis. And it's not based on water that I could have put in the aquifer, but I didn't. And they also claim, I mean, again, in order to get this AMC thing, you have to be so arrogant as to think that you're the only one that causes the aquifer to stay full or at a good level. Farmers all conserve, God sends rain, rivers push it in. Wichita is the big, the big boy, that's no doubt, but they're not the only ones there. And the idea that they are is ludicrous. And the idea that, well, we have an ASR, so we deserve it, I don't get that at all. I don't know what else to say to it outside, I just keep talking just for the sake of hearing myself. So I guess that's my answer.
Yesterday, Mr. Basor talked about a lack of trust. Um, would you agree?
A lack of what? I'm sorry.
Trust? When it comes to negotiating with the city or reaching an agreement with the city?
Oh, oh, okay, okay, I follow you. Well, I would say the ASR from the beginning to the end creates an element of lack of trust. Um, I remember the very first meetings I went to was about the ASR. And I don't remember the man's name now, but he stood up there on the podium and he said, this is great for everybody, it's a win-win-win. We're gonna put water in the aquifer and store it for us, for a rainy, a rainy day, a dry day. And we're gonna push the salt back in the Burton Salt Plant. That was the big, I mean, that was the big selling point. And I was kind of like, well, I, I guess I was neutral. I mean, I, I live in Wichita, I've had, I had dealings, you know, when you live there, you live close, you have some interaction with Wichita. I have to say my level of trust even from that was a little slim, but as far as it goes with this and the ASR, I was kind of neutral. I know there were people that say, you know, they were afraid that they wouldn't get the water clean before they got it in and this and that. I, I, I don't reject their, their worries. It, something can always go wrong when you start doing this kind of thing. But my idea was kind of like, yeah, right, if they can. I, I, I guess I was doubtful, but it wasn't, that wasn't a trust issue, I was just kind of doubtful. But they now claim that they have, and I believe this is, it's in, I think it's in this somewhere, but I, I remember setting when we were at the hearings over at the church, Daniel was testifying to the quantity of water that if they used all the recharged wells, how many million gallons they can do a day? I thought it was in the low thirty millions. Um, that's about a hundred acre feet a day. I don't know what they've recharged to this day because the latest numbers I could find was twenty sixteen that they've put approximately, I think they got six thousand dollar, six thousand dollars, they've got about six thousand acre feet of credit. I don't know what their bulk injection was, because I know their credits get some discounts for, you know, different wells, where they're at and all that. So I don't know what their total quantity is, but they've accumulated six thousand acre feet out of what, ten years? And they could pump, they tell us that they've got the ability to inject a hundred acre feet a day, and all they can come up with is six thousand acre feet. Uh, thirty days is thirty thousand, so, what, they've, they pumped what, a hundred days? Ten, a hundred acre feet a day, ten days is a thousand, a hundred days is ten thousand. So in a hundred days, they could do, or less, they could do what they've done, and they tell us that it works. I doubt it. I seriously doubt it. I, I submit my opinion that if the ASR worked, we wouldn't be here today. That's why we're here, is because ASR doesn't work, yet they tell us it does, and they're still telling us it does. And I, I don't think they've proven it. And they're gonna say, well, the aquifer's full. The aquifer is not full ten years ago when they tried it, when they started it. They had a hundred days. There's three hundred days in a year, my calculation, so we've had ten years, they've had three thousand days, thirty-five hundred days. Whatever, surely, there's been more than a hundred days that the aquifer was not full. I think we could probably go back and, we could do the science. We could probably go back and look and see, I don't have that number in front of me, I don't keep all the record, but I'm just pretty sure the aquifer hadn't been full for all thirty-five hundred days, well, it'd be thirty-four hundred, because they pumped a hundred days. So I, I don't trust that that's worked. The other thing that actually, I guess, probably came before that, that I, I was kind of like, you gotta be kidding me, is these bank storage wells. Um, I guess phase one, maybe there's some that work, I don't know. Um, but phase two, I remembered when I was told that they were gonna put wells along the bank of the Little Arkansas and put them to bedrock. But that was river water. That was my first day of this ASR is a problem to me, because I thought, that's nuts, you can't do that. Oh, yeah, yeah, we can pull water from the bank's storage next out of the aluminum next to the river, and it won't be pulling out of the, the aquifer. I'm sitting here thinking, this is a city Wichita thing, they're gonna turn that water in circles and get credits for it. And I guess fortunately, they were able to have to put in test wells and show that it didn't pull it out of the aquifer. So somewhere along the line here, somebody may correct me later in the day, but it's my understanding that, that it was pulling water out of the aquifer, and they had to go to surface only. They told us that would work. They spent millions of dollars to have somebody tell them that it worked and then go experiment with it, and it didn't work. They told us they can get it in the ground, and I submit it doesn't work. They're gonna argue with me and tell me that, oh, yeah, yeah, it works, it's just full. Well, reality doesn't say that it's worked. So that's what I have to look at is reality. You can blow smoke at me all day long, but I'm looking at reality. You can't pull the water out of, out of the aquifer next to the river and call it river water, they proved that. And I think we've proved that they can't get the water in the ground. I think it's sad that none of it works, but it doesn't seem to work, and we've been told twice that this works. So far, what it has cost the community is a bunch of this, which takes up a lot of our time. But past that, it's been mostly expense for Wichita, it's not been our problem, other than they do a lot of digging up and tearing up people's fields and you got that, but the cost has been minimal, let's say. Well, let's say that this hundred and twenty thousand acre feet deal and allowing it to go to ninety-three levels, and, you know, they're asking for the ninety-three level, they're, they're allowed to come back and ask for another ten feet, you know, I mean, renegotiate, renegotiate. That's a sideline, I guess I shouldn't have gone there, but, um, if this goes wrong, then it's serious for everybody. Because of the irrigation wells quit pumping, and everybody's homes quit pumping. Or let's say it's minimal, and we don't get a lot of less pumping, but we get the salt pulling in from the northwest, and we get the salt coming from the south. And it starts damaging all of that. Those systems that we pay for, that we buy from Josh, if they're not lined, they're thirteen years and they fall down. I've got to buy another system. It's saltier, it gets the worse, and then it gets to the point where you can't grow certain crops, and then you're in the Richard's testimony that, so if they're wrong on this one, it's expensive to everybody. It's not Wichita's bill, it's everybody's bill. This is why I'm here today. If the Wichita wants to blow their money off and make mistakes, everybody's got, they've got their right to do that, I don't care. But if it's gonna cost everybody in the neighborhood, I think it should not be allowed. And the AMC's, I don't even, I don't even think we should be talking about whether or not we're gonna use the hundred and twenty thousand acre feet, because I don't think the AMC should ever be, we should never got past that point. Should have been shut off before, when that word came up, somebody should have said, no, that's illegal.
Has the city or anyone contacted you about purchasing your water right for use during, or renting for use during a drought?
No.
Has, I think you've probably been here when the city at one point or another has said, if this proposal is not granted, they will have to make space in the aquifer. Does that sound familiar?
It does.
And what are your reactions to the idea of making space in the aquifer?
Uh, I have the concern of making space in the aquifer, in that I don't think they have the ability to recharge it. But let's say for the sake of the discussion here, that they can recharge it. It's their forty thousand acre feet, they can do with it what they want. I think it's poor judgment. I don't know, I guess you could maybe say unethical, I don't know. I guess that's not for me to judge. But they act as though they have no other source of water. They have Cheney, which is an excellent source of water. They've learned to use it. They've learned to use it to the point that they backed off of their usage and it contributed to helping the aquifer move up. So the idea, I mean, I heard it, I mean, I heard Mr. Pagers stand up on the stage, I believe, that's where I heard it. Be careful of that, but I, I kind of thought that's where I first heard it. That if you don't allow us to do this, we'll just pump a hole in the aquifer, because we have to, because we have to have water rights. Well, I don't know anywhere than the law of Kansas that it says if I have to have a water right, I should have, I should get one. You should get them the way everybody else gets them. You go to an area where it's unappropriate, where the appropriation, where it's not over appropriated, and you go through the whole system that I said of getting a permit. And if they're, you, they do the safe yield, and if the safe yield's good, and you can, you know, rent, buy, borrow, whatever that person's land, and you get along with them, and you can stick a well in the ground, have at it. But the idea that you're gonna pump water to Wichita out of this, out of the Little Arkansas River and then get a credit for that, a second using of other water because you took this water to town, you're getting two acre feet of water for every acre feet that you actually have. And you're using water that evidently everybody else could be using. I'm gonna have to have you tell me your question again, because I got sidelined on what I just really wanted to say. So if you could get your question again, maybe I'll do a better job of finishing up.
I think you answered adequately, but I asked your reaction to the city's claims that they need to make space in the aquifer.
Oh, yeah, sorry, I got me off there. Um, yeah, I, I think they, if that's what they feel like they've gotta do, then I, I have no objection, other than I think it's not a good idea. But from a legal standpoint, it's their water, they can do it, and if they can recharge it, go after it. I guess my biggest concern is, I don't think they can recharge it, I've stated that, I think they've proven they can't recharge it. Do they have a plan that after they pump a hole? And they can't get it in the ground? What are they gonna do about that? What's the plan? Is there a plan? I mean, they've said, we have to do this to do this, but you've never proven that you can do this. I don't, I don't buy it. And, and they're gonna say, well, we, you know, and they may say, well, the river's not flowing right, and da-da-da-da-da, they may give me ten reasons why they couldn't recharge. And they're gonna say, I'm not being fair. I'm gonna say, those ten reasons could be here in the next ten years too, and you still can't recharge. You act like you couldn't do it the first ten years, but we can do it in the next ten years. Well, what's the proof? I mean, just because an engineering firm tells you that you can do it, I don't know, they may have all kinds of different problems the next ten years. The, the water treatment plant wasn't working that day, and it rained that day, and I got my boots stuck in the mud this day, whatever, you know? The proof is, they can't do it. So my concern, from that standpoint, is they want to pump a hole, they can't fill it. If they can fill it, it's, they, they have ASR rights, they have their native rights. They don't need, you know, anything else. They don't need, you know, anything else. The AMC's are not there so they have more water. They're there so they have more water rights. The water is not theirs. The water's in the ground. It is not a permit they went and got by any other means. It's not an ASR water. It's just water that's in the aquifer and they wanna, they wanna write to it without going through the regular channels.
Well, thank you. I have no further questions.
Mr. McLeod?
Thank you. Mr. Carp, did, did I understand you to say in your testimony that you believed that the modeling done for the city's proposal was modeling from a full aquifer to show the withdrawal of a hundred and twenty thousand acre feet of credits over eight years of drought?
I believe I did.
I, I believe I did.
Did you read the city's proposal?
Only pieces. No, I did not for the most part.
As between your water rights and the city's forty thousand acre feet base water rights, do you know who's senior and who's junior?
You know, the one I've got there, I'm gonna assume it's junior, but I don't know for sure.
Uh, the particular one that I've put there, I, I would, I would assume it's junior, but I don't know that for a fact mine.
If, if you're correct and your right is junior, should the city be worried that you're pumping your junior water rights in an over appropriated area?
Only if I, uh, only if I impair them. Whoops.
Give me just a second. Only if I impair them.
Do you think that higher water levels are a good thing for your well?
Uh, I think they're a pain in the butt.
So you believe that the, that the aquifer should be drawn down to a lower level than?
I do.
And do you have an idea of, of what that lower level should be?
Oh, you know, five, six feet less than we've been doing the last year or two.
So were you present when, uh, when Mr. Romero of Valued Groundwater Inc. discussed the modeling that he had done for the groundwater management district?
I was there for some of it, but if you get into specifics, I, I may or may not have been.
Do you remember Mr. Romero modeling pumpage down to the night, to the, to the new index levels proposed below the nineteen ninety-three levels?
I don't remember anything specific about it.
If we could, let's have the, the witness refer to GMD exhibit number sixty-eight.
Probably need help here, guys. Of this one here. This whole book sixty-eight or am I on the right page? Or has he not got us that far yet? I'm somewhat closer here.
I'm somewhat closer at the moment.
Mr. McLeod, I think he's ready for your question.
Okay. Okay, around third from the last page in that exhibit. Um, please refer to figure six. And within that figure scenario C.
Okay, I'm, I don't know if I'm anywhere close to where I need to be here.
You should see a, a page with about six graphic depictions on it with contour lines.
Uh, I might be getting close here. Yeah, maybe. Uh, it looks like it's, it doesn't have page number, but.
Near the bottom of the page, it should say water level drawdown from scenarios A, B, and C, figure six.
Yeah, that's where I'm at.
Okay. And, and can you tell, looking at the, um, scenario C graphic, which shows contour lines, um, what according to Mr. Romero's modeling, the reduction in water level would be under that pumping scenario in the location of your well, your, your, uh, well that's within the basin storage area?
Well, under C, what, what?
What's your question again about that C scenario?
Okay, looking, looking at the graphic lines, the contour lines, can you tell what contour line would be closest to your well that's within the basin storage area?
Well, I see one, two, five written here. Uh, let's see the proposal elevation limits, Wichita's EBWF. What's the EWF mean?
So I'm thinking that would be the equus bed well field.
Okay, so you're asking me a specific question from this page. I don't think the answer's there. Maybe I'm just not clear.
So I'm, I'm asking if you can tell which of those contour zones your, your well would be in?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna say one or two, probably, probably one.
Okay. And do you know what those, what those numbers represent?
No, that's kinda what I was questioning there about was what do they mean?
Okay. Well, I, I won't go further with that question then.
Please do. I wanna know.
Well, well, let, let me just ask this, Mr. Carp. If the result of Mr. Romero's modeling was that you could expect a, a one or two foot level decrease in the aquifer at your location there in the event of the, of the drought scenario that he modeled where the city used its native rights and credits over a period of eight years, would you think that that one or two foot reduction in water levels was unreasonable?
Do I think it's unreasonable? Is that what you asked?
Yes.
I.
Um, I do not know.
Do you think there's any chance that a one or two foot reduction in the water levels would be water your existing well?
I think I know what you asked, but ask it again.
Do you think that there's any chance that a one or two foot reduction in water levels there in the aquifer would be water your existing well?
No.
Mr. Carp, does, does your water right allow you to pump when water levels in the aquifer are below the nineteen ninety-three levels?
It would.
And do you think that you should have to stop pumping at your well if the water levels went below the nineteen ninety-three levels?
No, I did not. I did not sign an agreement saying that I wouldn't.
So given your testimony today that you think it would be dangerous to pump at level of people have never pumped that before, would you stop pumping just out of caution because of that concern?
As I said, I did not sign an agreement that I would do that in order to, to, uh, obtain a permit that I was struggling to get. So I offered this in order that I could get my permit. I did not do that. City Wichita did.
Do you think that the city of Wichita should request that all pumping junior to its water rights should be shut off if the nineteen ninety-three levels are reached?
Why would they request that?
If, if the city determined that we were being impaired by those junior rights, you think we should request that they be shut off because now we're looking at the very dangerous nineteen ninety-three levels that we've never been below before?
That would be their right to take that to DWR, I believe. But once again, I did not sign an MOU agreeing that I would never do that. Hey, just a second. When I punch this, it does not mute and just de-mute. Don't know what's happened, but maybe it's going ahead and working, but.
We can still hear you out here.
It seems to be working all of a sudden, so, but I, I can't mute it and de-mute it.
Mr. Carp, do, do you understand how the existing physical recharge credits allowed under the existing ASR permits work?
Um, just out of my being sure, ask again.
Mr. Carp, do you understand how the existing physical recharge credits that are allowed under the current ASR permits work?
Uh, to some extent. I do still have a question as to whether there have been junior or senior. I believe that that was maybe answered that there's senior. But I don't know for sure. Outside of that, I understand that they work. They put an acre foot or a gallon or whatever into the aquifer. They put them into different cells. Each cell has a different um, quantity of water from what they put in there. I do know, you know, I mean, I understand that they don't get one hundred percent of everything that they put in the aquifer. I understand that if it's close to the river and there may be some discharge out of the aquifer into the river, that they don't get as big a credit for that one as they do say one that's clear back in the middle of the aquifer and it's not gonna flow out somewhere. So if that's what you mean, yes, I do.
Do you think that there is any cap on the number of credits or the amount of credits in acre feet that the city can accumulate in physical recharge credits under the existing permits?
Do I think there's any what?
Any cap.
Cap? Is that what you're?
Yes.
Now, I'm gonna have to have you say the whole, start on. I can't get this to go. I'm sorry, Mr. McLeod, you're gonna have to state, now that I asked the middle question, you're gonna have to state the whole question again. My memory's short.
Okay, but let, let me try to put it in context. You know that in the proposal, there would be a hundred and twenty thousand acre foot cap on all, all credits of all types combined, right?
I understand that.
Do you think that there is any cap currently in the existing permits on the physical recharge credits?
I don't know.
And Mr. Carp, you, you seem critical of the notion that the city would be able to put credits in storage and then, then use the water as, as you said, um, at a time when it's more valuable, as in the event of a drought. Does, do, do you understand that the current permits and the current physical recharge credits would allow exactly that?
I do. That's, that's water that they actually put in there. I'm talking about the water that they did not put in there.
And you also understand, don't you, Mr. Carp, that the aquifer never gets fuller than full?
That's kind of a dumb question, but I guess, yes.
So e- e- even though the city is putting in water for physical recharge credits? So now I'll, I'll just, I won't ask that.
No, go ahead. I'd like to answer that one.
But, but I will.
I would like to answer that one. Go ahead.
Uh, I will ask you a different question instead, Mr.
I like that question.
And you had suggested in your direct testimony that the city's physical recharge credit should only have a priority date from the date that the credit is put into the aquifer.
Yes.
Are you suggesting that from the moment the city puts, puts, goes through everything required in the ASR process to treat and place a gallon of water in the aquifer, that every other existing user in the aquifer should have a prior right to use that water the day the city puts it in? Is that what you're suggesting?
Absolutely.
And Mr. Carp, why would the city ever put a gallon of water in the aquifer under those terms?
I don't understand myself why we ever did went down this road. And the answer, it should not have been allowed.
I don't have further questions for the witness.
Are there any questions from DWR?
Nope, there are not.
Any questions from the groundwater management district?
Yes.
I can't, I can't get it to mute. Yeah, I've done something or something's, oh, yeah.
Uh, Mr. Carp, can you hear me?
I can hear you fine.
Okay. Mr. Carp, I just wanna ask a few follow-up, uh, questions based on what you were asked just a moment ago and also by, uh, Ms. Wenling. Um, you were asked some questions just a, a second ago about safe yield and whether or not you should be pumping your water right in an appropriated area. Do you recall that question you were just asked? By Mr. McLeod? Do you recall a question of that nature?
It doesn't, it doesn't wanna move at all. That's I mean, oh, I'm really going. Shouldn't have let me touch it.
We're working on some audio issues. Just a moment.
Okay, I'll sit tight.
It still won't, okay. It did, but it connected that arrow again for some reason, so. Okay, ask the question again because I didn't remember being asked that specific question. So try again.
And maybe I didn't hear correctly, but I thought Mr. McLeod asked you a question about whether or not you should be operating your water right in an over appropriated area of the aquifer. I thought he asked a question to that effect. That, that isn't ringing a bell?
No, I don't think it was. He asked me, should I be operating it below the ninety-three levels? I don't remember the question of should I operate it in an over appropriated area?
Either way, when you first applied for your water right, it would have met safe yield at the time. Is that correct?
I'm assuming the well that I have listed in their deal here, I purchased that land with the water right or we on it?
I, I think your, your microphone went muted in the second part of that answer.
I would not be able to answer that question. I'm.
Try again. Um, I would assume that the particular well that is in the exhibit here, I purchased that land with the water right already on it, so I would not have been privy to the beginning.
And, and just from my knowledge, the water right in question, what year was the date of, of priority for that water right?
Yeah, you know, you'd think a guy sitting in this chair would have that. I don't, unless it's in our.
I'd, I'd ask that you turn to exhibit twenty-six and intervenor's notebook. Let me know when you're there. Let me know when you're there.
Okay. I'm there, but I'm not seeing. Or I say I'm not seeing much looking for. I'm.
The numbers might have changed. So I think that after I read the well records, it's 36, Dave, if that's what you're.
Yes, I am looking for the well records. In the notebook, I have the original intervenor notebook. It's listed as 26. So if it changed to 36, that's my apologies.
That's mine. Yeah, that's it. I believe I've got in front of me what you want.
If you were to thumb through these exhibits, would that refresh your memory as to the priority date of your water right?
Yeah, I mean, well, May 9th was the.
Just to speed this up, if I were to tell you.
I believe it'd be May 9th, 1988.
Sorry, that's actually the date of when the certification was issued, but if you flip just a little further, if I were to tell you your priority date is 1979, would you have reason to disagree with that?
Not according to this.
And in fact, if I were to proffer to you that that's what that exhibit indicates, would you agree with me in that regard?
I would.
Pardon me, Mr. Stuckey, can you give me the file number for that particular permit?
32678.
Yeah, I think Mr. Carp said it. So let me just ask you this, and you can tell me this is a stupid question if you want to, but your water right predated the city's AMC proposal, correct?
Uh, yes. Yes.
And so in the sense that heard some feedback there, to the extent that the city is taking water out of the aquifer, that it didn't actually inject, that attempt would be junior to your water rights. Is that true?
Yeah, junior at best. Their water they inject is junior. The water credit is theft.
And I understand how you feel about the matter, but certainly that attempt would be a later attempt and in that sense, a junior attempt, correct?
Correct.
You indicated just a moment ago that the water right that you have has value. Do you recall some of that testimony?
I do. I do.
And you indicated that certainly there's a difference between irrigated water rights and non-irrigated or dry land, correct?
Correct.
Do you have just a general knowledge of the difference between irrigated land and on irrigated land in your area?
Are you speaking of value?
I'm speaking of value. If you can give me kind of a difference in price and what they usually sell for.
I would say some of your more sandier soils, poorer, let's say, let's say somewhat poorer ground. The value gets further apart is probably dry land's a third or less. Third's probably a decent number. If you get into some better dry land soils, it would probably be more closer to half. I guess that would be my answer.
Okay, so if we apply that principle to your land, the land that you have your water right on and the water right being 32,678, we're talking about the land that water rights on. If you were to use, if you were to lose the use of that water right on your land, what do you think the decrease in value of your land would be?
I believe it would be the half. It might be a little more, but it would probably be closer to the half than the third.
And in approximate dollars, tell me what we're talking about. You don't have to give an exact figure to the penny, to the exact dollar, but in a general sense, what kind of loss in value are we talking about here?
Well, it'd be $3,3500 an acre at least. Could be, could be 4,000, so 41632640. A half a million and excessive, maybe a little excessive, a half a million.
So if you were to lose the water right on your land, you're testifying here today that it's possible that you could lose up to a half a million dollars in assets, if you will?
Saleable asset, yes. Could be more than that if I decided to keep it and I just couldn't retrieve my annual benefit from it.
Let me ask you this. Have you ever been approached or asked about selling any water or selling any water rights?
I have not.
And so your knowledge of the loss of value of your land is based on your experience with the difference between irrigated and non-irrigated acreage, correct?
Correct.
To the extent that the city's AMC proposal encroaches upon your use of water on your land, have you given the city of Wichita permission to so encroach?
I have not.
And if the city of Wichita's new proposal results in essentially taking water from the aquifer that it did not put into the aquifer, do you believe that that's taking your water?
That is a taking of the water.
And again, are you giving the city of Wichita permission to take your water?
I am not.
And I think you already answered this for me, but with regard to the water right on your land, you said that you purchased that land from someone else, correct?
Correct.
And when you bought that land, I assume that you had an expectation that you would continue to be able to have that water right and that investment-based expectation.
Had I not, I would have bid less.
So is the answer to that, yes?
Sorry, yes.
And so if you were to lose that water right on your land, you're telling me that it would drastically impact you from an economic standpoint? Is that right?
A half million dollars is a lot to me. I don't know about you.
But not just that, not just the diminuation in the value of your land, but you would also lose your ability to effectively irrigate your crops, correct?
Correct.
And so the loss to you would be really twofold. Number one, you would lose the value of your land. Number one, and then number two, you would lose your livelihood on your land, or that would be greatly undermined. Is that a true statement?
Yes.
Just a moment ago, you mentioned multi-year flex accounts. Do you recall some of that discussion?
I do.
And you had an explanation for how multi-year flex accounts work. And what we talked about was it was a five-year approach and you could, in some sense, bank water for use in a future year. And that's overly simplifying the discussion, but do you recall that?
I do.
Let me ask you this. The irrigators in the area, to the extent there was a drought and then to the extent they needed to bank water, was a multi-year flex account, was that the primary tool or option that was offered?
Sorry, I must not have listened to the first part of the question. If you could go through the whole thing, I apologize.
During the drought years, was the multi-year flex account the main option or scenario that was offered to irrigators to effectively bank water?
Somebody could tell me I'm wrong. To my understanding, it kind of started then and it was available from then on. I'd never really known about it, given any thought before that. Perhaps it existed, but I'm not aware.
Yeah, I guess my question is this. Are you aware of another, to the extent there's water shortages and irrigators want to bank water over a period of time, are you aware of an option other than a multi-year flex account?
No.
So in other words, if an irrigator wants to take advantage of a methodology for future years, the multi-year flex account is probably the best option. Is that a true statement?
Yeah, probably the only option.
So let me ask you this. If the city of Wichita is concerned about projected future water use and how they would handle the situation during the drought, do you believe that a multi-year flex account is a approach the city of Wichita should also have to explore?
Are you telling me they haven't?
Well, I'm asking you, to the extent they haven't, is that something the city of Wichita should also consider?
I guess I'm surprised they haven't.
And just to answer my question.
Yes, yes, sorry.
And so to the extent that they haven't examined the multi-year flex account and instead they're trying to pump directly to the city of Wichita and then accumulate these credits, do you feel that the city of Wichita is thus trying to operate under a different set of rules than the irrigators are operating under?
Yes, absolutely.
Let me ask you about some questions that were asked regarding the mechanics of an aquifer maintenance credit. And you were asked some questions about diverting water directly to town and the city getting credit for that concept. Do you recall some of those questions?
Yes, I do.
You've lived, you mentioned that you've at least lived in the area of the aquifer for some time now. Is that right?
I do not live in the area. I, we do our production in that area. I live close to Wichita.
And when I say area, I mean you're within 30 miles of where your wells are. Is that correct?
Oh, more like 15.
Within 15 miles of where your well is, okay. So in that sense, you would know other irrigators and you would know people that operate within the aquas beds, right?
I do.
Let me ask you this. Are you aware of any other irrigators that pump water directly out of a river to irrigate? And you don't have to say names. I'm saying in a general sense, people do that sometimes, don't they?
Right, I'm thinking, I was trying to think if I know anybody specifically that's doing it. It's, I know there's some up and down the river, but it's very limited.
Okay. And you know, for example, these irrigators that pump water directly out of the river to irrigate their crops? Let's just assume with me for a second here, a hypothetical, let's say we have and this irrigator is able to pump water directly out of the river to irrigate their crops. You follow me so far in my scenario? And let's assume the same irrigator has another water right where they can pump groundwater. You still follow me?
I'm with you.
To the extent that the irrigator pumps water out of the river, are they getting, should they get a credit to pump more water out of the aquifer?
No.
Is that something allowed under?
No.
So tell me the difference between the city of Wichita's aquifer maintenance credit proposal, where they're pumping water directly to the city of Wichita and then asking for permission to then divert water out of the aquifer. How is that different?
I'm drawing a picture that you're saying your scenario was that they could get a credit in their secondary well because they were pumping water out of the river onto a separate property. I would say that's very similar.
So I'm gonna pause you here. Based on the similarities in those analogies, do you think the city of Wichita should get credit to pull water out of the aquifer based on diverting water directly to the city of Wichita?
No, their water credit there is the one that they have for the surface water out of the river. They've got their credit. Anything out of the aquifer is a second credit.
And so to the extent that.
Sorry.
My apologies. To the extent that your water right has a priority date of 1979 and is senior to the city of Wichita's attempts to divert aquifer maintenance credits, in that sense, do you feel that they would be diverting your water if they pull water out of the aquifer under this new proposal?
Lost you. It went, it went quiet.
I lost, I lost half of that question. It went quiet.
I guess I would ask if that question can be reread. Was it lost to the record as well? Could you read that question for the record?
Sorry.
To the question, to the extent that your water right has a priority date of 1979 and is senior to the city of Wichita's attempts to divert aquifer maintenance credits, in that sense, do you feel that they would be diverting your water if they pull water out of the aquifer under this new proposal?
Would you like me to rephrase?
I'm thinking. I'm thinking. I'm gonna say in that specific question, not necessarily. I think they're pumping water that anyone in the aquifer. How am I gonna state that? I think they're pumping water that no one else in the aquifer has a right to.
Let me, let me clarify my question here. I'm not sure if you thought I was talking about ASR physical recharge credits or the aquifer maintenance credits. So let me clarify my scenario. With respect to an aquifer maintenance credit, if they divert water directly to the city of Wichita, the city is asking for a, to be able to then have a credit to take water out of the aquifer in the future, correct?
Correct. Correct.
And they didn't actually inject any water into the aquifer. Is that true?
Correct.
So in that sense, under strictly the.
I can't, I can't get it to go. I mean, it just won't go. It kind of has a mind of its own here.
We could try to not talk over each other, and that's.
Too quick.
Yeah.
So to, so to the extent that they didn't put water in the aquifer and then they're trying to take water out in the future that's dedicated to all the other users in the aquifer, to that extent, wouldn't they be appropriating water of other users, including yourself?
I'm sorry, I'm thinking about it and I'm not sure I'm getting your question.
If the city didn't put any water in the aquifer, but then they want to receive a credit to later take water back out of the aquifer, isn't that water that would be already dedicated to other users of the aquifer, including yourself?
I, I could go with yes on that.
And so if that's true, then if it's already dedicated to other water users, including yourself, if they were to take that water out and appropriate that water, could one argue that it's already appropriated to you and other users of the aquifer?
In an over-appropriated situation, yes.
When you were testifying, and I just think I missed the answer here, there was a question that Mr. McLeod was attempting to ask you. And you said you liked the question, but then I think he moved on and you weren't able to answer the question. Can you repeat what that question was and go ahead and furnish an answer for the record?
Well, he started out, I believe he started to ask me if I felt that way, then how come I didn't feel that way about the ASR water? And I was gonna say, I do. But I kind of, I kind of forgotten what his question was for sure. But I do remember thinking he was gonna attribute the same kind of a question to just the ASR. I was gonna say, well, I don't think District Two should have ever allowed that either, was my answer. But, you know, I kind of jumped ahead of what I thought his question was. I think that's what it was, but I don't know for sure because I didn't, he didn't finish.
And just a brief follow-up on something else I asked. And I know that Mr. Bezos was asked this question. I'm not sure you were asked it explicitly. The question was asked of Mr. Bezos. If he were to leave water in the aquifer, would he get a credit for leaving water in the aquifer? And he answered, no, that he wouldn't receive such a credit. Do you believe that you would receive such a credit if you decided not to fully pump your water right?
No.
And definitely didn't speak over you that time. We got some feedback. So in that sense, do you believe that if the city of Wichita gets a credit for not pumping out of the aquifer, that you should also then get a credit? If you choose not to fully irrigate your water right in a given year, should you get a credit for future years as well?
Well, theoretically, yes, but then the whole system's blown up.
The whole system's blown up. And what do you mean by that? That the whole system is blown up? Why would that not be good for the aquifer?
Well, it's a free-for-all, everybody. Let's just go. Po calls wherever. And that would set the precedent to do that statewide.
So that circles right back to the vehicle or the methodology that was developed by the Division of Water Resources and the legislature to envision that scenario, which was the multi-year flex account, correct?
Correct.
And the multi-year flex account allows a accounting approach where it's banked over a period of five years. And so you can account and to the exact gallon of water, ensure that over that five-year period, essentially the same amount of water would be used regardless. Is that right?
Yes, the accumulation of that five-year, that permit over five years would never be pumped past its total summation of a five-year accumulation.
So let me ask you this. Let's say just hypothetically for a moment that every irrigator in the aquifer, to the extent they decided not to pump their water rights, so let's say every irrigator in the aquifer was allowed to build up a credit of 120,000 acre feet that they could then use in the future. You follow me?
I'm with you.
What would happen to the aquifer if a whole number of irrigators, and not just irrigators, industrial users, other users of the aquifer, if they were all able to bank up 120,000 acre feet of water and then all use them at once during a drought, what would happen to the aquifer?
I'm thinking.
If, if all these, if all these, if you will, credits were not
Here's my deal is that I, if you do it under the basis of the credits, I, I'm kind of wanting you to re-ask the question because if you do it under the basis of the credits, the banking system, due to the fact that people gave up 10% of their rights and that they can still only go
I, let me rephrase. I think I confused you. I think I confused you. And I apologize. I'm not talking about a multi-year flex account right now. I'm analogizing to the city's proposal. And in the event that, just like the city, if an irrigator or an industrial user chose not to fully use their water right and they were able to then bank over a period of time, to the extent they didn't use their water right, if they were able to bank credits up to 120,000 acre feet, and then an extreme drought hit and all these, these users of water in the aquifer then suddenly tried to withdraw all these banked up credits all at once, wouldn't that be detrimental to the health of the aquifer?
I believe so.
And so then bringing us back home, why isn't the city of, why is the city of Wichita allowed to accumulate all of these credits up to 120,000 acre feet for water that it actually doesn't inject into the aquifer? Why is the city allowed to do that?
Let's hope they're not.
In other words, you think that would be detrimental to the health of the aquifer? Is that true?
Absolutely.
I don't have further questions. Thank you, Mr. Carr.
Ms. Welling?
I don't have any further questions.
So I thought I heard some feedback there.
We have no further witness. We have no further witnesses.
Okay. Then I'll conclude the presentation of the testimony.
We're not getting any audio.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so
It's, it's
That will now conclude this part of the hearing for today.
We're losing audio again.
I'm sorry, what?
We couldn't hear you. We lost all audio of what you were saying. Our apologies.
That's okay. Can you hear me now? I am not.
Yeah, we could hear you, but I think there's another mic turned on in the facility. And we're getting feedback too.
Okay, are you able to hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So I will start over at the risk of repeating myself for anyone who could hear me. This then apparently ends the fourth and last party's presentation. Is this any better? If you can see, nod. Okay, good.
Now you're cutting in and out. And I, it seems like we've gotten so far along, doing so well. I can't understand why this is happening now.
I don't understand either. I don't know what's different. Right, okay. So I will start again. We are now concluded with the fourth and last party's witnesses for these proceedings. Before I close the record for today, the record, because we're still taking
Right after, before I close, it started going out again.
Is there a different laptop I should use? Is there? Okay.
Connie, come use this one. And I'll just leave it on if everybody else could mute. And that way you should be able to talk back and forth with all the attorneys.
I can't see myself. Can they see me? Okay. We are trying this from a different laptop. Can everyone hear me now? Not if you can hear me, okay. We've just concluded the presentation of the fourth and last party's case in these proceedings. Before I close the hearing for today, I would like to request the attorneys only to be a part of a Zoom meeting to discuss further logistics in approximately 10 minutes. Stephanie, would you please ask Rhonda at DWR to set that up and send a link?
Yep.
The record is not officially closed at this time, however. The, we are still taking public comments through 5:00 PM on February 26. And those would be in written form, either email or by mail to the address at DWR to Rhonda Hutton on the DWR's website for the Wichita ASR page. Before I close out these proceedings for today, do counsel have anything to add? Okay, hearing done. Thank you all so much with your patience with our technology issues. And that will end this proceeding for today. Thank you.